The board will now come to the order, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus, present. Alderman Middlebrook, present. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans, present. Alderman Page, present. Alderman Iggracia, present. Alderman Calder. Alderman Rice, present. Alderman Gunther, here. Alderman Valmer, present. Alderman Martin, present. Alderman Stevens, here. Alderman Switzer, present. Alderman Howard, present. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg, present. Alderman Peel, here. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer, present. Alderman Collins Mohammed, here. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bucaro, present. Alderman Orion, here. Alderman Cole. Alderman Clark Hubbard, here. Alderman Boyd, present. Alderman Navarro, present. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Calder. Alderman Green. Alderman Todd, here. Alderman Davis. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cole. Twenty-three, present.
Our quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Monica Nettles Johnson of Kingdom Purpose Worship Center. Uh, we're so blessed to be led today, uh, by you in prayer, uh, Pastor Nettles Johnson, we are in your hands.
Thank you, President. Good morning, everyone. Uh, before I begin with all the things that are happening just in the world today as well as here in the St. Louis metropolitan area, um, President Reed asked me to just have a moment of silence for the students that were lost this week at St. Louis University. So we just take a moment of silence, reflect. Father, we thank you today. This is the day that you have made and we rejoice and we are glad. We thank you that you are still God and you are still good even in our strenuous situations. We invite your presence into the meeting on today. Our scriptures instruct us to pray for our leader, so we pray for those today that are involved in governing the city of St. Louis for the honorable mayor, for the honorable president of the Board of Aldermen, for the honorable aldermen and women and their staffs. Help our elected officials of this chamber to hear and reason together. Help them recognize that their work is for the benefit of all. Enable them to think and strategize in ways that will achieve great results. Help them to wisely evaluate options. Give them wisdom and understanding to enact legislation that resolves issues and brings growth in our region. Give them insight, guidance, and innovation to navigate the needs of our city. Help us to find places of agreement as we continue to do the work and let our decisions create an atmosphere for a better St. Louis region. These things we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Uh, thank you, Pastor. Let's give Pastor Monica Nettles Johnson a big round of applause and leading us in prayer and we look forward to having you back again. Uh, and I appreciate, uh, you taking out your, your, your time this morning to help get us started on the right foot. Also like to ask everyone if, uh, let's, um, you know, find a way to celebrate, uh, uh, the Hispanic, um, Heritage Month, uh, which we're right, right in right now. Uh, and, um, find ways to, to, um, to celebrate it and to engage in it so that we can celebrate what it all stands for as the Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you. With that, we'll dispense with line item three, any introduction of our guest, any introduction of our guest. Alderman from the 23rd.
As always, I like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my other guest.
All right, welcome Greg. Any further introductions, any further introductions? All right. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minute dated Friday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on approval of the minute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes from, uh, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
And move, move out on from tenth and second it by the one from fourteenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for reappointment to the Central West End Southeast Special Business District. The re- reappointment of Mr. Jeffrey Minor, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the Central West Ends, South, Central West End Southeast Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the Mayor's appointment of Jeffrey Minor to the, uh, to the Central West End Southeast, uh, Special Business District.
Second.
Been moved by all the one from the seventeenth and I think it was the other one from the twenty-eighth. Yep.
Yes.
Second about all the ones from twenty-eighth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. Renee Vega, whose term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely, sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the fifteenth, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the Mayor's appointment to the Tower Grove, uh, Neighborhood Concerned Citizens Special Business District.
Move by the one from the fifteenth and ten second on that. Second, I think it was the other one, the other one, second about all the one from six, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Soulard Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. Steve Adele, the appointment of Ms. Laura Leiser, the reappointment of Ms. Phyllis Young. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the, uh, reappointment to the Soulard Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the Mayor's appointments and reappointments to the Soulard Community Improvement District.
Move by Alderman from the seventh and entertain a second on that motion. Second about all the one from the fifteenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Clean Energy Development Board, PACE. The appointment of Mr. Neil Richardson, who resides in the tenth ward. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the Clean Energy Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the Mayor's appointment of Mr. Neil Richardson.
Move by all from tenth and entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about all this from the twenty-second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That is the extent of report of city issues.
We dispense with line item seven. Now, I just want everybody to note how easy that first part of the agenda was. Let's make the second part justice. Justice, see, boy, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal accounts? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal accounts?
That's Mr. President.
Alderman from the sixteenth, you recognize.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to, uh, take off, uh, Board Bill sixty-one floor substitute and add to the regular perfection calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that at Board Bill sixty-one floor substitute to the end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal accounts? Anyone like to take any further bills or resolutions off of any of our informal accounts? We'll dispense with line items eight. First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill ninety-eight sponsored by Alderman Iggracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportement Authorizing the Department of Appeals to accept the twenty-twenty-one Medical Reserve for COVID-nineteen Operational Readiness Award of ten thousand dollars from the National Association of County and City Health Officials containing an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-nine sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, an ordinance approving a blighting study dated June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one for the West Floyd, the Soto, and East Warreni Avenue area. Board Bill one hundred sponsored by Alderman Iggracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportement Authorizing the Department of Health and Human Services on behalf of the City of St. Louis to accept the grant award from the Washington University Health Communication Research Laboratory through funding from the National Institute of Health in the amount of thirty thousand dollars containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one zero one sponsored by Alderman Valmer and President Reed, an ordinance pertaining to ward boundaries for the City of St. Louis repealing ordinance six eight nine eight one codified as chapter two one two of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis twenty twenty anno, establishing new ward boundaries within emergency clause. Board Bill one zero two sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Transformation Christian Church and World Outreach Center Way pursuant to ordinance number six eight nine three seven, which shall begin at the intersection of North Sarah Street and Page Boulevard and run west on Page Boulevard to the intersection of Whittier Street and Page Boulevard. Board Bill one zero three sponsored by Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Tyus and Alderman Bucaro, an ordinance adopting the twenty-eighteen International Co- Plumbing Code with amendments repealing ordinance six nine two five five and containing the penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill one zero four sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of North Taylor Avenue and San Francisco Avenue regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Taylor Avenue at the intersection of Taylor Avenue and San Francisco Avenue. That is the extent of first reading of Board Bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill ninety-eight and one hundred, to the Health Committee, Board Bill ninety-nine, to the Legislation Committee, Board Bill one zero one, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill one zero two and one zero four, and to Public Safety Committee, Board Bill one zero three. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following Board Bills were reported out of the Streets Committee with a due pass rec- recommendation. Board Bill sixty-two sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in the Essex Place from Marcus Avenue in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill sixty-four sponsored by Alderman Martin, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in the easternmost eight point five two, eight point five two feet of Water Street from East David, north really approximately one hundred and forty-three feet in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill sixty-five sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in Central Avenue from Ashland Avenue, South Wally, to a point in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describe, described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill sixty-seven sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel beginning approximately eight hundred and thirty point five feet southeast of Humboldt in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill sixty-eight sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in irregular portion of Twelfth Street considered as excessive right of way adjacent to twelve zero four through twelve zero six Lynch in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accord, in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill seventy sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in First Street from Angelica Street, South Wally, to its terminus in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill eighty-one sponsored by Alderman Todd and Alderman Bucaro, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name of Michael P. McMillan Way pursuant to ordinance number six eight nine three seven, which shall begin at the intersection of Albert Avenue and Page Boulevard and run north on Albert to the intersection of Albert Av- Avenue and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. Board Bill eighty-three as amended sponsored by Alderman Evans, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Captain David Dormway pursuant to ordinance six eight nine through seven, which shall begin at the intersection of Dr. Martin Luther King Drive and Sarah Street and run north on Dr. Martin Luther King Drive to the intersection of Whittier Street and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. Board Bill eighty-eight sponsored by Alderman Collins Mohammed, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name William Lacy Clay Boulevard pursuant to ordinance six eight nine three seven, which shall begin at the intersection Natural Bridge Avenue and Fair Avenue and run west on Natural Bridge Avenue to the intersection of Nat- Natural Bridge Avenue and North, North Newstead Avenue. Board Bill ninety-four sponsored by Alderman Switzer, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Bates Street and Leona Street regulating all traffic traveling westbound and eastbound on Bay Street at the intersection of Bay Street and Leona Street. That is the extent of first reading of Board Bills. I'm sorry, first reading it for the standing committees.
With, uh, uh, second reading. The end of second.
Sorry, second reading of reporting standing committees.
All right. It's good to see that the clerk, uh, makes a mistake every now and then, we all do, but, uh, you never do, so. We dispense with line items fourteen and fifteen. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill sixty-one floor sub sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, President Reed, Alderman Calder, Alderman Davis, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bucaro, Alderman Howard, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Evans, Alderman Collins Mohammed. An ordinance to make it unlawful for an individual to lift the door handles or otherwise try the door of blocks of successive vehicles to gain entry to the vehicles unless the individual is the owner of the vehicles or has the owner's permission to en- enter the vehicle.
Alderman from the sixteenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill sixty-one floor substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill sixty-one floor substitute.
Move sixteen, uh, and second it, uh, I think it was Alderman of twenty.
Fourteen.
Fourteen's fine. The fourteenth and twentieth there. Alderman from the sixteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, colleagues, I, I think the, uh, the reading there, um, the preamble that, uh, the clerk, uh, indicated kind of speaks for itself on this bill, but I thought it's important to maybe refresh everyone's memory just kind of where the, the evolution of this. Uh, maybe touch on the virtues as I see in the, in the board bill um, and really, uh, hone in on its intent, uh, around strategy, uh, and police strategy, proactive, uh, policing. Um, in the sense that what could turn into, uh, a very violent altercation. I think we all recognize this problem, right, which is, uh, door handle flipping or door, uh, successive, uh, checks of door handles. This is where, uh, organized criminal units, um, are rolling through blocks and all four corners of the city and checking for unlocked doors, checking for a way to get into a door very quickly for really two main purposes, police will tell you, and that is to either steal the vehicle, but more importantly, I think the, the goal is to, uh, steal guns. Uh, I think something one in ten cars in St. Louis that are broken into, uh, have guns and, and, uh, are stolen. So this is, this is a prolific problem. Um, and I think the real concern around it is not just that, uh, folks are touching your door handles and that we're coming down in a, in a very hard criminalization of, of, uh, attempted burglary, which I think technically this would be classified under, which of course we all know is very hard to prove, but I think this ordinance makes a goal statement to say, what happens when there's an intersection between these criminal units checking door handles uh, and a taxpaying citizen? What is the altercation? And I think it doesn't take a, a, an unreasonable position to, to, to say there's going to be a potential violent altercation. And will have an impact mentally on, uh, a person of that crime. Uh, there is an example of this, a year and a half ago, two years ago, in a, in a neighborhood in Lindenwood Park. Uh, a young mother was installing a car seat at ten o'clock at night. And, uh, these units rolled up and there was exactly that, that intersection, that, that coincidental meeting that took place between offenders who are just flipping door handles, um, and this young mother. She had to kneel down in an execution style position, a gun was put to the back of her head. They took her keys, they went into her house where her infant was sleeping. Uh, they stole a bunch of electronics and other, uh, belongings, came back out, took the car, uh, and left her. A very traumatic experience that no citizen should have to go through at ten o'clock putting a car seat on their street. I'm not saying this bill absolutely cures that, but I think this bill puts forward and plows as a lead blocker to say this is going to be a municipal violation that is going to have to be dealt with, with the police on, in an investigative manner. Perhaps after the fact even, right? I don't think we envision, uh, police catching, uh, these units necessarily i- in real time. But with the prolific investment every citizen is making in very affordable ring doorbells and other camera security systems, there is an opportunity here for the police after the fact as they prioritize crimes as they see fit to make a police report on this and potentially investigate these rings, right? These large organized units that are committing these offenses. Um, to get back maybe to the, the, the genesis and the, uh, trajectory of this, you may recall in sort of our last two July meetings before we broke, uh, this bill was perfected. This bill was perfected under a, a different wording, uh, in, with seventeen votes. And, um, in the spirit of compromise and cooperation in wanting to work with the Public Safety Director's Office and wanting to work with, uh, the administration, uh, we, at the last July meeting, the last before we went on break, we reperfected this bill and, uh, I committed to a spirit of compromise which I believe we've reached and, uh, informed you all, I would be back with a repackaged bill to reperfect uh, and hopefully, uh, finally pass. Do those compromises were made with the Public Safety Director's Office are really in three main areas. Uh, first, we further clarified and defined what successive meant. I think some of our, some of our colleagues during the debate, uh, in July raised that, well, what if someone just accidentally raises a door handle, uh, on one, two, or even three cars in a row? Okay, so let's further divine, define the word successive. Uh, we did that in that, we did that here, which means, oh, trying to open locks of one vehicle after another. I think reasonable minds stand, believe that we know what that means. We further clarified that in an event to alleviate, uh, any potential profiling. Um, also, uh, ninety days imprisonment was the original, uh, Board Bill. Uh, in hearing from some of our progressive colleagues, the all principal progressive colleagues, uh, down at the Board of Aldermen here that were trying to, uh, not send so many people to jail for low-level offenses, uh, couldn't agree more. So we, we backed that down to thirty days. Uh, and quite frankly, I think the reality of the situation is I don't think a municipal judge is likely to, uh, uh, consider jail time at all for these offenses unless there is a, uh, uh, you know, significant, um, prior offenses associated with it, which would probably classify it into potential felony anyway. Uh, the third, and I think again, a very important one, I'm glad I, I reached out, uh, to the Public Safety Director's Office. Uh, the third, uh, compromise or concession that was made after already having received seventeen votes, mine, he was to say, hey, this isn't, and this isn't, this is maybe, this is an ordinance to be used as a investigative tool after the fact, quite frankly. So we will, if we happen to apprehend some of the, some of the offenders here, we will offer diversion, uh, and/or probation. And you'll see some of those changes in section three, and only after a second offense within ninety days of a first offense will, uh, will it be allowed for a judge, municipal judge, to consider, uh, a fine or potential imprisonment. So I was very happy where we came to.
Alderman from the, uh, sixteenth, would you like to get the floors, if you have a floor sub, would you like to get that in front of us? Um, uh, to discuss those changes?
So, so let's, uh, take a point of order there. Mr. President, I, I was under the impression in our, in our last July meeting that the floor substitute was brought in front of you and then we just put it on the informal calendar.
So that, so you're discussing the, the, the current, okay. All right, I didn't know if you had something else you were.
No, no, sir.
Yeah, so all the comp, you, this is all of the things that are in- integrated currently. Okay, perfect.
Yes, sir. I think, I think procedurally we, we are, uh, between the guardrail.
A- absolutely. Thanks, thanks.
No, no, thank you, appreciate that. Um, so those, those were the compromises we made and, you know, um, I, I'd like to have everyone's favorable consideration on this and I'll certainly entertain questions.
All right, in further discussion, Alderman from the tenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Would you please add me a co-sponsor?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, at Alderman from the tenth as co-sponsor.
Let's don't note it.
Alderman from the eighth.
Mr. President, um, I, I'm, I guess I'm confused by what is in our folder because there is a Board Bill sixty-one floor substitute and there's a Board Bill sixty-one floor substitute new version. And so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to clarify which one it is that we're discussing. Um, and I'm not sure if that's a question for you or for the sponsor.
Would you like to ask the Alderman from the sixteenth to yield?
Yeah, I, if the Alderman from the sixteenth would yield.
Alderman from the sixteenth will yield a question to the Alderman from the eighth. Sure. Alderman from the eighth, please proceed.
Thank you. I, um, yeah, I'm just trying to, to clarify if you could, could you talk about the difference between those two bills that are in the, in the perfection folder?
I'm gonna, um, you know, I'm gonna have to defer to the clerk because there were two versions and I think, uh, one was, was, I mean, I would assume newer version would be the, the, the most current. I'm not sure why there might be two iterations in the, in the Google folder. I can check just to make sure if there's a difference between the two. I think the second, uh, what's being titled as the newer version was maybe just some cleanups, but I think substantially, uh, both those are probably the same, but again, I, I need to ask you to the, the clerk or the attorney to, of the board.
Okay, so I think, I think I can find it. So the difference, um, what is under floor substitute combined? What is under floor substitute combined, which is I think the bill that we voted on. Previous session does not have any of the changes that you talked about, about a first time offense, removing the imprisonment requirement and. And the second there, so those are two different bills. So if the, if. Are, were you intending to change?
The newer version is what contains the changes all the way.
Right, okay, so I think if that's not the one that we voted on previously, I think we do. Need to vote to put that in front of us, is that, am I getting that procedure correctly, or do we?
I actually don't know, I think I might need to.
Yeah, Alderman from the eighth, if you will hold that for. A minute, if you have some additional questions, Alderman from the sixteenth, I recommend you reach out to directly to the clerk. Terry Kennedy about the difference between those two.
I appreciate it, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're properly debating the one that you've worked so hard on, Alderman.
All right, thank you. Although. All the ones from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, will Alderman from the sixteenth yield?
Alderman from sixteen, we yield a question to all. All along from the seventeenth, please proceed.
Alderman from the sixteen, I was wondering, how would we prove that there was tampering and lifting of the door handles?
Well, I mean, I think I would leave that up to the to the police department around the ways of probable cause. They would certainly have to investigate and make a case. If door handles are being lifted in a successive. Way, which of course would mean trying one after another. So that would be, I think, how it would potentially be proven. And, you know, there's, there's some video footage that. I've, I think, been circulated around as well as in in the previous July meeting showing. What successive, what an example of successive would be around the ways of tampering. So, you know, to answer your question, it would have to be surmised from either after the fact video footage. Or again, in the rare circumstance, this is caught, this, this behavior is caught in the act. And there would need to be either, you know, probable cause sworn testimony by an officer. Or again, I think what more likely would be happen is the big eye on this guy. Why, and the camera footage would would indicate whether or not reasonable people would determine whether it's successive or not, Alderman.
Alderman from the sixteen, thank you for that explanation, so if I understand correctly. It would be either video footage or caught in action would be the ways in which these individuals could be prosecuted, is that correct?
Yep, you got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize.
Mr. President, can you, can you ask the Alderman from the sixteen, will he, will he yield for questioning?
Yes, Alderman from sixteen, we yield a question to the Alderman from the eighteen.
Yes, of course.
Alderman from the sixteenth. How is this bill different from, don't we have, we have a law that's called tampering with an auto automobile? How is this law different from that law?
I'm not sure what law you're referring to with with the tampering. I think there is, there is a tampering law. That exists in state statute, but is also under a broader or more vague statute. Of attempted burglary or attempted larceny. So this, the 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 intent and hopefully the virtue of this bill, Alderman, is to really hyperlocalize it. And and make it unlawful at a very local level so that we can formulate a a criminal strategy around it. So I think that's the distinction be between what is considered a very broad tampering statute. Or or attempted larceny, which of course are are very hard to prove. But the point is, this, this bill puts the issue, which I think I described. Can lead to an even scarier situation. It puts the issue of being proactive around this very scary activity. At the forefront so that the police department can hopefully formulate a strategy around it, albeit just a municipal violation.
Are there any provisions, are there any provisions to stop, whether it's the police or a citizen? From falsely accusing a person of tampering? And that has happened before.
Sure, sure, the, I mean, there's, there's nothing in here, I mean, I think it that specifically addresses that. Alderman, I I would argue that, I mean, from a, from maybe just a logical standpoint, that happens every day now. Quite honestly, I I think there are an abundance of police calls for service. For folks who may or may not be tampering, and they may be just close to someone's garage window, you know, who knows? I think we we have to allow the 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 confidence in our police department to discriminate against those. And and, you know, apply the law where where it fits. I think a lot of people are calling in because everyone's on edge. It's a scary time in our city.
Right, thank you, last question, one, one other question. Will the. Person who is arrested, if someone is arrested, will that be expunged from their record after they are, if they are arrested and convicted?
I don't know the answer to that, I think that's up to the courts, honestly, I I, it's not addressed in here, Alderman at all.
And one of the reasons I brought it up is because one thing to contribute to crime is, once you've done the crime and the time. Is you have a police record, so then we end up with a lot of repeat offenders, and then we. Get to the point that we are at this particular time, we end up with people on edge because we. Have been totally ineffective in our approach to crime. Meaning that instead of dealing with expulsion records, once a person has done the time. And another reason for increasing crime, instead of dealing with poverty, which is the root cause of crime. Because poor people, most poor people, there are two reasons that most poor people steal. One is because of poverty. The other reason is because of drug addiction. And we could, and once a person get a police record, it doesn't matter what it is. And you go to get a, a police record lasts for a lifetime. We're talking about not just the sentence, but a lifetime. And once we give a person life, we're gonna have victims, the first one person that we do know is a victim. Is the person who the crime was committed against. The other person who is a victim is the person who has done their time and done everything and want to change. But the other one is the taxpayer, who is continually paying a hundred dollars to put people in city jail. And still, crime has continued to rise and we continue to have people on edge because of the propaganda, because of the ineffectiveness. Of the approach that we have used for years, making false promises that things are going to be safer. And this is why we are on edge, and we mentioned guns. Education is the key to everything. We need to educate, first of all, if the person has. Whether they have a police record or not, my understanding is they can, if they had the money, they could buy a gun. So we have a lot of irresponsible people out here with guns in the first place. My position is that I believe that they were, most people who tried to break in court. Would be looking for anything. They can find in order to have some money, as well as to. Have something to sell, so I think it's endangers other people's liberty. I think that it could be, we have a history of racial profiling and poor people's, especially racial profiling. It could be used by some people to keep people out of certain neighborhoods. That they don't want people around, it's a very dangerous bill, that's what I think. And I'm, I'm unapologetic, I don't think that. I think, I think it will be used by some people, because we have a hostile environment at this time, a racially hostile. Environment, we have a class hostile environment where we want to. Where we are not willing to spend our tax dollars. On people. Poor people, and when in reality, poor people pay taxes, poor people with. And the working class from history have to build this country. And and this is a total waste, I think, locking more people, that we're gonna have more people in jail that exposes them to. Right now, COVID nineteen. It wastes, if we get, if people had a hundred dollars a day. Fifty dollars a day, we could save the taxpayers money, we would be safer. So therefore, I think that this bill is a very dangerous bill, because I think it threatens the liberty. Of of people, I think. It's taking us down a very slippery slope. It will end up filling the jail, we need to try to get people, divert people. And this will just only fill the jail with more people. And it will just be a burden on taxpayers, and I think we need to move in the proper direction. Which is to have jobs for those who are mentally and physically able to work. And a guaranteed annual income for those who mentally and physically unable to work. And this will reduce crime more than anything and make us safer. And we need treatment for education and treatment and alternative activities to, for people's using drugs. Meaning that some people call it recreation, we need to have our parks open, having real recreation. We need to do other things to entertain people instead of dealing with drugs. And we need to, finally, we need to deal with the root cause of the problem, which is on television, we have a, on the intermediate. We have all of this violence and the same people who sponsor these violent programs. Had throw the brick, had their hand, and then talk about violence when what we end up doing is. Promoting violence day and night, so we need to, in my opinion, I'm gonna stop, we need to. More than anything, us deal with the root cause, which is not that little person we keep picking on who is stealing, who. Pulling a door handle, we need to. Come out and speak out against these peoples who, who are really sponsoring this violence. And we need to deal, and there's a lady named Penny Hiss, who wrote a book called The Culture, Overtaining the Cultural Violence. We need to read that book, and the reason we need to read that book is because that book tells us we have a history of violence. And we need to accept that, and we need to, once we accept that, we need to. Then start reform, and then we need to start truly educating people as, and change our culture. So that we can address the real, both the historical and the current causes of violence. And that is the only way we're gonna deal with it, any other way, gonna have us in conflict forever. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield back to the honorable Alderman from the sixteenth floor. And thank you, Board of Alder, men and women.
Thank you, Alderman, actually, point of order, Mr. President, you know, turns out, got some clarity here from the board, you were right. We we do need to make a motion to get the correct, per, per the clerk and the board's attorney, we need to make a mo, I need to make a motion to get the correct floor substitute in front of us. Thank you, Alderman, also for.
Please hold on for a second, Alderman from the sixteenth, you're done?
Yes.
I'm an eighteenth, excuse me, Alderman the eighteenth is wrapped, Alderman from the sixteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, in the, to be within a point of order here. You were correct, I do need to put the appropriate floor sub in front of us. That is called board bill sixty one floor sub, so would it be appropriate to make the motion now?
Yes, it absolutely would.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I move to put board bill sixty one floor substitute new version.
To the floor substitute.
To the floor substitute.
Dag it, been moved by Alderman from sixteenth, saying by Alderman from tenth, any discussion? I know there were hands up, but if, are there any discussions about the introduction of the floor substitute itself?
Yes, yes.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you have a discussion point about the introduction, not the, we just need to introduce it. So it's just a technical.
Well, introduced it because I wanted to talk about this.
Okay, all right, it's been moved, moved by Alderman from the sixteen, saying about Alderman from tenth, that we induce floor substitute. To to board bill sixty one floor substitute, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion, motion carries. All right, now we have the proper floor substitute in front of us. And I think it would be appropriate to go back to the Alderman from the eighth, who suspended her questioning. To this point, and then we'll come back through, Alderman from the eighth.
That was, that was my only comment at this time, I'd like to listen to the rest of my colleagues.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to comment on the bill, please.
Please, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, I originally was opposed to this bill for some of the reasons, I think that a lot of my colleagues are opposed to it. Is, will this be effective, what are we criminalizing here? And I've come around a little bit, one, because my constituents. Have communicated with me about the bill. But also, just personally, we have people walking through our driveway flipping door handles three, four nights a week. And a few weeks ago, we had someone in our car, we caught them, the police came. Video of it all, video of this same guy in our neighbor's garage, with guys out in no charges, no nothing in an hour. We've lost about twenty five thousand dollars worth of stuff to theft in the last year. So, yeah, I'm a taxpayer, and yeah, that takes a toll on your family. And. Nothing is being done at all in my ward, nothing. Catalytic converters. High speeding, just flying into vehicles, nothing happens. It is the Wild West in my ward, and I know it's the same for everyone else. And we just keep pretending like this is just some new normal that we all have to put up with, and it's crazy, it's absolutely insane. So I've come around a little bit, I appreciate the bill sponsor for working with the mayor's office, I appreciate the mayor's office working with the bill sponsor. But we can't have reform if absolutely nothing is being done. Doing nothing is not reform, people don't have a chance at programs, people don't have a chance to go to diversion courts, this city is doing nothing. I know there are people out there trying, but it's, that's how it feels in the ward. Guy in my car flipped two other door handles in our driveway. And we just, we came home that night, it was pouring down rain, we forgot to lock the car. And now, it's this constant feeling of, you know, even my kids feel this, and I know everyone else does too. It's this constant feeling of like, should have locked our car, or, you know, shouldn't have left the garage open so long, we were mowing the grass. And, no, actually, we're the victims of this, we're the victims of the stuff stolen. My kids are the victims of all their toys being stolen, and you having to explain a hundred times over, like, oh, yeah, that got stolen again. Or just lie and say, oh, I don't know what happened, we lost it, I don't know what happened to your bike. For the third time, the third bike, or whatever it is. I understand that there, that what drives this, and I get that. And I understand that a lot of it is poverty, but I also have a lot of residents in my ward that are struggling to get by. And when their cars run into, or something is stolen, that costs them as well. And I understand that this may seem like, oh, well, that's just door flipping, but it's really come down to me not being able to tell my constituents. You know, anything, I'm like, well, I don't know, I don't know, I'm sorry, yeah, it's happening to me too, I don't know, and I just come up with excuses. So at this point, I'm pretty much willing to try anything, because again. Man in my car drops the crack pipe in my front yard, has stuff stolen from everyone else who had their cars unlocked in the neighborhood. On video, in the neighbor's garage, an hour late, oh, and by the way, one in another districts too. Just free, no consequences whatsoever. No opportunity for a program, nothing, do I want this person to have to go sit in jail, absolutely not. But, I mean, anything, community service, I would be happy with. We used to have the trash task force that offered community service, I haven't heard from the trash task force in months, but it used to be a good program. And it at least offered a chance for folks to participate in wrong, you know, righting some of the wrongs, so. I'm going to change my vote on this. To one of my colleagues asking if tampering, if there is a tampering law, yeah, there is. If there is a tampering law, yeah, there is, is it, is it being enforced? No, absolutely not, because that's what should have happened for any of my constituents who have had this problem, or. In case, in, in this case, in my driveway. So, while I appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness on this. And while I understand folks think that this will probably do nothing, and maybe that's the case. I have to, at the end of the day, answer to my constituents who are incredibly frustrated and tired of this, thank you.
Alright, thank you, all, um, all the women for the first, first, for the first time.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, I'm kinda gonna agree with Alderman from the eleventh. Um, I'm not one, I don't like things that lock people up, that is not my first go-to. Um, I was a juvenile public defender attorney, I worked in, uh, public defenders, I did felonies, I did misdemeanors. I fought hard for my clients, often watching my clients. Uh, go from juvenile to misdemeanors to felonies, I would beg with them, I was social worker and attorney. This past, uh, earlier this year, we had a group of young teenagers going the forty-nine hundred block of, uh, Northland. Just what the Alderman from the sixteenth is describing, they went down and they touched every car up and down the street. Flipping the handles, flipping the handles, so all my neighbors, I live one block away, so everybody started calling me. And they said, we've been calling the police, and the police scolded the people who were calling to say, is it your car? So why are you calling if it's not your car? And they said, well, our cameras are picking this up, because all my neighbors, of course, have rain cameras. Um, and even previous to that, uh, we have bars on our windows and everything else. Because we are so committed to staying in the city that we're not going anywhere, okay? We're a lot of black, middle-class, black people, not going anyplace. So we have to keep going the extra step, the burglar alarm, the cameras, everything to stay in our community, and we're staying there. Um, and we've had a lot of problems with the city not doing what they're supposed to. Illegal zoning, putting gas stations up against houses, putting halfway houses, putting, uh, uh, homeless. Uh, uh, com- uh, communities, all of that pushed into, uh, neighborhood that they would never do in another neighborhood. But we have just still dug in and said, we're gonna stay, so when they're calling the police, they're calling, they're calling, they're calling. And so I finally, they called me, I call, um, I called the captain, which we might as well not have a captain of the fifth district as it relates to us. Because Mueller just does nothing for our end, we're on the end of the fifth district, and he only knows about the central quarter part of the fifth district. So then I had to call the police chief, and so he asked me some things, and they finally sent a car out there. Um, but at the same time, all these people who were calling, were getting chastised for calling, like, well, so what if they're opening your door? I don't understand what the point would be, why a bunch of juveniles would go down the street and try every door, you know, that is not okay. You, you, you know, you don't live there, you don't have any business touching my car, and tampering is, um, a felony tampering. Usually they go to other things, they, you know, they got felony tamperings, one, two, three, I think it is in Missouri, ABC or something like that. And so, um, what the dispatcher told them is that that was not illegal for them to be, uh, going up and down the streets. Pulling up on the handles to see if they were unlocked. Um, so that bothered me, because they ultimately did break into the, some of the cars, and they stole some items. And then the police had to come back out, because the police just came, drove up, saw the kids doing it, and just drove by, like, so, that's alright. Um, so when the items actually got stolen, then they had to come back out and make police reports, but. They didn't act like it was that big a deal. I don't know if any of you have, have ever had your house broken into, or your car, or whatever, um, I've had my house broken into. So we had to put a burglar alarm, we had to put, uh, bars on the window, and then we kinda had things quiet down till they put Covenant House across the street from us. Then we had a four hundred percent increase in breaking into garages and things, and so we were all shocked, because we had lived there ten, twenty years, we never had that. And all of a sudden, they brought all these young people from someplace else, and they just have been wrecking havoc on our community. Um, so, my question to the police was, what was the reason? That you thought young people would be walking up and down these streets, trying the cars, um, doors? So, uh, of course, some of it could be, they wanna. See if, uh, some of the doors are locked, or not, if I'm going in there. Even if the door's not locked, you don't have permission to go in that owner's, uh, vehicle and steal anything, or bother anything, or take a joyride, or any of those things. You still don't have permission, if my front door is not locked, you do not have permission to come into my house. And my neighbors were so irritated, more so with the police than they were with the people who were doing it at this time. Because they, to a person have been told, all the people in North St. Louis don't report, they don't tell the police, yes, they were, they were calling. And they all had videos, which I still have a copy of the video, just what the Alderman from the sixteenth shared, I still have a copy of the video. I mean, like, a group, large group of people just going down, flipping, flipping, and then ultimately breaking into a car. Now, do I, really, 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 do I want them locked up for life? No. Do I really want them to have a, uh, a history of crime and that they can't get out from under a, a record? No. Um, so I have always stuck, in Missouri, you can do an expungement, you do a petition for expungement yourself, I help people all the time for free. Do that, um, in July, I think it was, Governor Parsons signed a bill, a new bill that makes it even easier to do expungements. Um, so that was good for me, um, and I think, uh, it was on the other side of the aisle, I think, I, I wanna think Shane Dugan. Was one of the sponsors who's been very progressive for Republican, I, I can't remember, but I know he's always, uh, supported those kinda things. But they did sign the bill, and so. I don't see how we just continue to say, that's alright, you do this, the police are called, the police said, we can't do anything. Um, I'm not real happy with the lockup provision, and I really would, I, I, I'm getting in on this at the end. At some point, Alderman from the sixteenth, I would like to see if we could have something else, but I do want a provision that says, this is illegal. I don't want the, um, uh, people who are, who call the police to be told again, it's nothing we can do about it. Until they actually break in the car, break your windows, steal your items, steal your vehicle. Um, then even if they don't steal your vehicle, they break your window, that's hundreds of dollars that people just do not have. Um, and so I, I would be interested in those people who are opposed to it, if somebody could tell me. What is the reason that young people would be going up and down, and it's often young people, and pulling up the car doors? And, um, trying, uh, to get into the vehicles if it's not theirs. And, um, he is exactly right, Alderman from sixteen, every, almost, I don't have a ring doorbell, because I have another system, but I have something. Everybody, almost in my block, my community, they have proof, not just eyewitness proof, they actually have video of the people doing it. And it's very stark, and so, um, for that reason, I am gonna support this bill. I do not support the lockup, I really want you to change that, but I support that we have to have something that says, this is illegal. And we don't need a, uh, we don't need a tampering charge brought on a state level, because then that's not a municipal violation. That is a felony, and I would not support that at all, this is a municipal violation, this is to be able to tell people that is not okay. And that is what is making me, and it's, it's very hard for me, because I really have always just been that person who fights to the end about, don't do this. But you can just not tear up people's stuff and make people frightened, I could hear the, uh, Alderman from the eleventh. Um. Pain in her voice, that's how I felt the first time my car, my house was ever broken to, and it was in South St. Louis, in the eighth ward on, at twenty-three seventeen Clem. And it made me move, I left, because it just makes you feel violated. I, I've been really lucky, I haven't had my car ever broken to, and I have a garage, which we go into, and in my garage, it has, uh, bars on the door, the passenger doors. And it also has a camera and alarm, so, uh, we haven't had our car, but the people who have to park on the street, they have a right to park on the street. And have a quiet enjoyment, that their car is parked in front of their homes, or someplace close to in front of their homes. And that they're not gonna have to be worried about, if they call the police, the police tell them that there is nothing can, that they can do. If this is a tool, then this is something I'm gonna support, I, I tell you again, I don't support the lockup, and I wish we could do something else. But I do support that it should not be legal for people to walk up and down the street and test cars. And, because there's no other reason that you're doing it except for to break into it, you don't live there, it's not alright. And it's not right to put people in fear of living in their own communities, we're trying to keep people in the city of St. Louis, not run them out. Thank you, Mr. President, I have no further comments.
Alright, thank you, Alderman, Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I first need to agree with the older persons from the eleventh and the, uh, first. Because right now, I'm shaken, and most of you all know that, not, not much makes me afraid, I'm out late at night. I, I try to be a part of every part of the city, but when we continue to have this narrative out here. That everything is okay, you can do anything you wanna do, break all laws, invade all privacies. And nothing should be done to you, because, oh, whoa, there is poverty. Well, most of these young people out here are not in poverty, they have nice, comfortable homes to go to. They have meals that are prepared for them, they have parents who don't pay enough attention to them. And they're out just creating havoc. I just wanna say a couple of things about this, the citizens are so concerned, they believe that we're living under siege. And it's not just this particular, uh, uh, infraction upon their civil liberties, but many others. And we've got to do better, because you see, the real problem isn't that the justice system. Is not necessarily how we do other things here, we have too many programs that are available. Our, uh, economic job market has changed, you don't have to check the box anywhere anymore. So we're not penalizing people because they have a record, you don't even have to have any experience anymore to get a good job. They said, if you can read at least on a fourth or fifth grade level, we will train you to do the job. Please show up, please apply, I will give you a bonus to come and work. Those are not issues that people have anymore. We also don't have to worry about, uh, the first incident. So that's a, that, that for me, I wanna thank the Alderman from the sixteenth and the mayor's office, and, and especially. Uh, our public safety director, Dan Isom, who took time to make sure that this was as civil. As possible. So now, there's not gonna be any incarceration on the first attempt. I mean, and that's what you wanna do, you wanna identify these young people and get them into something that is more meaningful for their future. Uh, but if you continue to do something, and you know better, and I've told you it's wrong, then yes, you're gonna have to suffer some consequences. Uh, I have had my car broken into. In a gated community with security, live security walking, and cameras, seven times. Parked on the street, it's been broken into three times. One of the times, we had eyewitnesses and cameras, and it was a group of four, they broke twenty-three cars. On that particular instance, that spot that night. Uh, they believe that they also contributed to another fifty-something break-ins. So let me share with you, this is not anything that, uh, we need to be so callous. In our attempt to, uh, talk about, oh, I'm so worried about the poor people, I need you to stop it. Because what you're doing is, you're creating a scenario out here, yes, we do have people who need help. But I wanna put the city of St. Louis up against any other city, for all the programming that is being, uh, provided in these communities. The organizing that is being done in these communities, the people who care about their neighbors in these communities. And what I hear and see that is being proposed from this Board of Aldermen. And from the administration for future services. Different, uh, scenario needs to change. The scenario must change, and we must start doing things that are more responsible. And not have our citizens live in fear, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board.
Thank you, Alderman from the nineteenth, Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, I, I, I first wanna thank the Alderman from the sixteenth. Uh, for, for being willing to, to work on this and really put in the work to come up with, uh, uh, what I think is essentially a, a pretty strong compromise. Bill here, uh, there, there were members of the board, such as myself, who, who thought that. Um, you know, locking people up and throwing away the key over, uh, flipping door handles was maybe a bit, a bit overboard. Uh, but at the same time, we're aware that the status quo isn't working for, for so many of our constituents. And so we, we, I do appreciate the fact that he was willing to kind of make the sausage here and come up with, uh, with a better bill. Uh, for, for everyone, uh, ultimately, I also agree with, uh, my colleague from the eleventh. Um, this, it's just not working for so many of, of, of us. And for our constituents to have these folks, uh, kinda roving around, checking every door handle. Uh, even if they don't get into your car, um, you know, we've seen instances where, uh, we have. Residents and, and these, uh, roving groups, uh, interacting with each other, and it almost never is a, a good scenario there. Um, so. Uh, it, I, I think one of the, one of the great things about this kinda compromise bill is that this could. Actually end up serving as a funnel to some of these social programs and to, uh, community service. Um, which ultimately, I know for a lot of, a lot of folks, uh, in, in my practice, who have been found guilty of, uh, you know, some. Low-level, uh, misdemeanor or ordinance violation, sometimes. Community service really does change the way that a, a person interacts with their community. Uh, so I'm, I'm, uh, very happy to see that there's an immediate referral to, uh, social programs. And that community service is going to be, uh, an alternative to, uh, to jail time here. And I, I also understand what the Alderman from the nineteenth is saying, where, you know, if you get, uh, pulled before a court. And, uh, you're sentenced to something, uh, like community service or to social programming, and you're going out and you're repeating those same actions. The court does have to ratchet up its, its enforcement then, and at that time, you know, maybe some, some. Uh, level of incarceration is appropriate, depending on the, the specifics of, uh, any given, uh, uh, crime. But, uh, I, I have come around to this, uh, and I will be supporting this. And I do wanna thank the Alderman from the sixteenth for putting in the time and energy and not just, uh, ramming something through. Uh, because I think that we did end up with a, a better bill here, uh, and with that, I will yield, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I wanna thank the Alderman from the sixteen for working so diligently on this bill. But I also, uh, understand what the Alderman from the first and Alderman from eleven have gone through. Because I don't think people that are fighting against this understand. Uh, the Alderman from the nineteenth made the statement, I went to, uh, in twenty-seventeen, when I had just got elected. I actually called Mary Lyta Cruzman, told her my community was under siege. And so, if you have never experienced that, you can't relate to what our residents are going through. And so, the issues that are coming, and no offense to the Alderman people that are dealing with it now. But these have been in our community for years, and so, when I was a young girl with my kids. My house was broken into three times around Christmas. I was a single mom with minor children, and they stole everything, all the way up to the dinner I had prepared for my kids. When they came home from school, and so, no, I, I support this bill a hundred percent. Because we cannot continuously keep making excuses on why people are doing what they're doing. Somebody has to step up and take accountability for their actions. And so how I raised my kids and a lot of people, when they were coming up, our parents raised us, you're accountable for your actions. So I support this bill tremendously, because as the Alderman from the first stated and the nineteenth. We have to start somewhere, to start holding people accountable. And I think it's good that he did work with the mayor's office and the public safety, uh, Dr. ISO. But also, I think, and we have brought this to Dr. ISO before, I think the nine-one-one and the two-three-one-two-one dispatch. I think the nine-one-one and the two-three-one-two-one dispatches, they need to be trained. Because I, I just believe they don't understand because they haven't, either they don't live in these communities or they haven't experienced what we're experiencing. Where, and I told people before, don't talk to our residents like they're illiterate. When you give them direction, they follow it. And then when you knock them down and tell them that's not important and no, that's not what you should be doing, that kind of hurts them to not even want to call and participate. As far as the task force unit, those people have risen in regards to people reporting the crimes and stuff in regards to the dumping and stuff. But we can continuously to keep going and not hold people accountable. Because you know what? Our city as a whole has become under siege. So it's just not North St. Louis anymore. It's the whole city that is under siege. And so I, I just think that we would really need to rally and support this because we have to show as a Board of Aldermen that we are trying to ensure that our residents are safe in their communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, as a co-sponsor of this bill, I agree with all of those that spoke before me. And I, I guess what I, I want to say is the Alderman from the twenty-seventh said is that we need to hold people accountable. Um I taught in St. Louis Public Schools for thirty years and I taught a lot of poor children, but they knew right from wrong. Poverty wasn't an excuse for not knowing, for knowing, you know, right and wrong. And I think that, you know, when, when they, when this, when people deviate from the norm, I think there needs to be consequences. Otherwise, we're just whistling in the wind here. And we need to give our law enforcement the tools to do their job, not uh pull the rug out from under them and support them. And I, I think that, you know, as we move forward, um we need to support what's going on. I'm not saying abuse of, of power, but I think we need to understand that people want some order in their communities. And without order in their communities, um people are fleeing, black, white, whatever. People are moving out of the city because there is a lack of order and a lack of consequences for those that do not follow the norms of the community. So I am fully again in support of this. And um I, I just want people to know that um without some consequences for people that do not adhere to the norms, we're, you know, in chaos. So thank you very much and that's all I have.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, thank you. Um I, I'm in support. And I, I don't understand why anyone would be afraid of holding criminals accountable for their actions. The, the cost to the city goes way beyond something that's taken out of a car. We've lost population. We've lost a lot of population. You know, I, I don't think this goes far enough, to be honest with you. I think it should, the, the, the thing should be added is the same thing they're doing downtown, which apparently gets special treatment. You know, the parents of these juveniles should be held accountable. You know, if your juvenile is out at two o'clock in the morning pulling door handles, you should be held for child neglect. I mean, I don't know why anybody, it just seems like we are so afraid to hold the criminals and they're criminals. They're not pulling your door handle to make sure you're locked up in your car safe for the night. They're pulling door handles and if they see something in there, a gun, a computer, yeah, you're bad. You shouldn't leave stuff in your car, but they'll shatter the window out of it to get it. So it goes beyond that. And the loss in tax dollars, the people leaving the city, uh two and three thousand people in some wards. You know, it, it, it goes way beyond that. So I, again, I don't think this goes far enough. I, you know, I support it. I hopefully we come back and we put in what the mayor is already doing downtown where uh they could special treatment, where juveniles' parents are held accountable for the juveniles. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Aldo, Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President and the Alder men of the board. And I also want to thank um Alderman from the sixteenth for bringing up this deal. I myself have been a victim of my car broken in just last week. Um it was um, well, I let someone use my vehicle and I don't think they really locked it back. But basically what they did, they went in and they tossed it. Uh they opened up the glove compartment and just, you know, threw what was in, in the um, the little top console. They were looking for weapons. And I believe this is the thing that, that they're looking for now. Uh well, I had a club on it, so they, I don't think they were looking to steal it, but they didn't because I do have a club on my vehicles. And it's got me to the point now uh when I let people use my car, I go by and I check the handles. I'm pulling, I hate to say it, but I'm checking the handles to make sure that my vehicles are locked because I've had my vehicle um tossed several times. And uh for what? You, you feel sort of violated when you see this and it's like, wow, somebody else has been in my vehicle and it wasn't me. So uh that's why I am co-sponsoring this bill. I am in agreement of it. Uh something needs to be done and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
Alderman from fifteen, you're, you're frozen. Alderman from the fifteenth. Um we'll come back to Alderman from the fifteenth. Alderman from the twelfth.
Uh thank you, Mr. President and the board. Uh let me lower my hand there. Uh I just want to say what we're dancing around is the fact that there's, there's no recourse. We can write as many laws as we want and as the legislative body, that is our role. That is our only hammer that we have at our disposal, but I think we're missing the nail on this one. There's absolutely no reason that the Alderman from the twenty-seventh ward or the Alderman from the eleventh ward should be in situations where individuals who are dropping crack pipes in yards or breaking into garages or breaking into homes are not being at least held or receiving no recourse but are instead walking. I do not believe this board bill will accomplish anything. We have an ordinance for tampering with vehicles. It's not enforced. And, and I, I don't believe that we're seeing the forest, but for the trees on this, again, we can write as many laws as we want, but we do not enforce the laws. There are numerous other divisions that do. The issue lies with the numerous other divisions, which experience issues of their own, which are leading to them not enforcing them. It's not a black and white issue. It is more nuanced than that. But I am going to vote present on this because I don't believe this will accomplish anything. And I regret uh Alderman from the sixteenth that we have not held conversations about this as your neighboring ward. That emails that I've sent to you have gone unanswered. I, I do believe there's some disrespect in that. So at best, I will be voting present, but I regret that we don't actually have a hammer to hit this nail. All we're doing is pounding a board. So with that, Mr. President, I yield back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fifteenth, is your video?
Is it working now? Can you hear me now? Okay.
You're up and running.
Um I think what I was starting to say was that I, you know, agree with the Alderman from the, the eighteenth and I appreciate his um, his perspective around um this bill. Um I see this as, you know, first and foremost, I think every person in this board has probably been a victim of a crime at some point in time. Um every single one of us has probably had something stolen from our property or from our car. And it's unnerving. It's, it's not something that any of us want to go through. The, the feeling of infringement on your personal space, on your personal property can really shake you to your core. Most of the crimes that have been listed today, whether taking a gun out of somebody's car or uh stealing items out of somebody's car or stealing items after somebody's garage are already crimes in our city. As the Alderman from the twelfth was saying, the issue is enforcement of already existing laws. Uh my concern with this bill, though I do think it's better than the previous iteration, is that I think at best, this will do nothing. Um it will just be added to a long list of things that are already not enforced. Um but I think at worst, it will lend itself to greater racial profiling in our city. Um and, and that is my major concern with this bill. Uh I think that people break into cars for uh a couple of different reasons, for drug-seeking behavior and um for issues associated with poverty. And I think that we are making investments and making changes in our city right now to address those things. Putting greater investments into our relationship with B H R and having our crew teams that can go do um outreach to areas where we know there are a lot of folks dealing with uh substance use is a great first step in getting us there. I think, you know, putting more people potentially in the criminal justice system, especially youth. Um we know the impact, long-term impact that that has on our youth and the way that they perceive themselves and that once they are in the criminal justice system, it is really difficult for folks to then get out of that system. And what I would hate to see is more youth um having a pathway into that system rather than being diverted from it. I do undersell my preference, which I believe is also the preference of the mayor's office, would be to have uh no jail time uh as a part of this bill. I also think that if we're talking about, you know, guns being stolen out of cars, we need to do a lot more public education for folks about not leaving guns in cars. Unfortunately, our hands are tied by the state in a lot of ways of things that we can do and things that we can mandate around um gun usage. But I don't think that there has been robust public discourse around um how many guns in our city end up on the street because they are left in people's cars um unattended and maybe doors are accidentally left unlocked. But I think that there has to be better education. There has to be um more places for people to safely store their guns if they want to bring a gun with them and then put it um, you know, in a lockbox in a, you know, in a, you know, by the stadium. I think we were doing that at one point in time um so that to try to divert these guns from being left in people's um, in people's cars unattended um and increasing the number of illegal guns that were making it onto our streets. So I think that there's a lot of work that we can still do in that area, even if we are preempted under state law uh in a lot of ways. So um long and short of it is, I do think that this is a better bill than before. I don't think that it'll actually be enforced. I don't think it will actually do anything, but it does have the potential to cause harm. Um and for that reason, uh I am still a no. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh with the Alderman from, from the sixteen, yield for questioning?
Alderman from the sixteen, will you yield a question to Alderman from the third?
Yes.
Alderman from the third, please proceed.
Thank you. Alderman from the sixteenth, uh can you explain to me um how this would potentially work uh live in action in uh, you know, in the instance, you look outside your window and you see someone repetitively moving from car to car flipping door handles? Can you just give us an explanation of how you see this working out? What would be the first uh step that you would take as the Alder person who sponsored the bill? And uh it's an example of how it is that you wanted to work out for another resident there who's utilizing this as uh one of the tools that we're talking about here for their uh leisure?
Yeah, certainly, Alderman. I mean, I, I think i- in the envisioned scenario, you described that it would be a, a call to the police like, like any other uh unlawful activity that's taking place. Uh unfortunately, I, I do think uh you will be met with reality as the Alderman from the first described, uh whereby uh residents have been calling in what, what is a, a scary situation, an unlawful situation. Um and there, there, there will likely be no uh real-time live reaction to it. To, you know, to be honest, I think, I think we're fooling ourselves and we think there's a, there's a, you know, uh the Calvary is around the corner uh to, to come and enforce this. Um but what I do think it, it, what needs to happen is that the police need to take a report on this. Um and even if it's thirty, forty, fifty, hell, sixty days after the fact, I would like a police report on this so that it memorializes this as a problem. And where I see it being a problem is not only in all the testimony that we've, we've heard today, Alderman, but in that situation where there is that coincidental bump in situation where, where uh a, a, a citizen interacts with these folks. And I think it's important to know that while some of the, I think some of the, the culprits of this activity are teenagers uh and youth, um I also think these are organized crime units, right? These are organized adults that, that are involved in the theft ring. And uh I think the police will tell you uh in most cases, in a majority of cases, they're after guns um and/or the ability to steal the car itself. Now, uh so I, I think having a police report around it, again, the police, we, we trust them to prioritize. So if they can't get to this activity right away, given it's a municipal offense, let's collect the police reports and see if we can start to pinpoint uh, uh, you know, uh sequenced behavior that can then lead to arrests uh at the time after the fact. Because I think it is naive to think that uh any kind of real-time situation will happen. But I think it, these people are repeat offenders and I think there's the opportunity to uh piece together through deduction and police work, uh starting to look at the activities uh and be able to maybe intercept them um and/or get uh again, with the, with the advent of everyone having, having camera situation, uh give vehicle information or descriptions and, and can lead to arrest and get, again, the repeated nature of this offense off the street.
Okay, thank you. So for clarity, first thing you do, you call nine-one-one.
Yeah.
And um tell them what you saw. And after that happened, let's say the, the police do make the time to come pull up, maybe five, ten minutes, twenty minutes later. You go down, express to them what you saw. What happens after you express to them what you see? You, what do you expect particularly from the police?
Yeah, my expectation that is there's a police report filed and that uh they, they look if they can follow up in any nature uh with any evidence uh in, in uh hopefully apprehending uh the, the culprits of it. Now, you know, again, from a priority perspective, a low-level municipal offense, is that going to um, you know, have the highest priority in the police department? Certainly not. And again, let's trust the police to, to divert their resources, their time and energy where, where the most violent crimes are happening. But my hope is that it leaves a paper trail with the police reporting that then there maybe is a special task force or someone around this because it's not just about flipping door handles and looking for a gun. Again, the fact that there can be an absent-minded citizen who happens to bump into this ring of, this ring of theft um and what, what violence can incur and what trauma can ensue uh in real time at that point, that's the fear. So that's where I think I want a proactive plan around it. And I, the only way we're going to get attention to that is to get the local ordinance on the books and have the police start filing reports on this. Moreover, uh I think it's um misplaced logic to say, well, we shouldn't do our jobs just because other folks aren't doing theirs. Um so if this doesn't get enforced, uh so be it. We need to make a goal statement for our constituents and then it, it behooves us to follow up on a law that We need to make a goal statement for our constituents, and then it it behooves us to follow up on a law that's on the books to those various departments who may or may not be enforcing it and saying, what the heck's going on here? Why aren't we enforcing it? Quite frankly, my constituents expect that level of representation from me.
So so in the event you have cameras, you show the police that, you know, this, this is what we saw, this is a description of the fellow or the woman that we've seen or the person of interest. Um, you give them that information, they write a police report, and you just expect to be able to look that up at some point in time to show that this person was um who it is that you've seen and possibly if there is a correlation in other neighborhoods that are happening with the same type of individual or somebody who fits the same description, you want them to be able to tag or, you know, maybe tie that person in to further uh situations that that have arisen like this across the neighborhoods, potentially and eventually capture that person or tier them um from uh committing these, this the same crime uh regularly in the same place, because people do target the same places regularly, especially once you get away with the crime once or twice, you feel like it's an easy uh, you know, it's an easy lick per se. Is that what your intent is?
Yep, I think you stated it uh pretty succinctly there, yes.
Okay, thank you. So um, right now, we're talking about, and I've heard multiple alderpeople say that there is already uh some sort of a law in the book for tampering with vehicles. Um, do you have any clue or idea of what that law details? And the difference?
Yeah, there are, there are vague state statutes around automobile tampering as well as attempted larceny. Uh, those are are state charges, though, right? So that would involve the 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 circuit attorney's office uh of involvement. And and we know that 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 office is busy dealing with violent crimes as well, and and it would be a lower priority, I think, uh, for them to uh criminalize um or prosecute uh this type of offense. Uh, why, this is why at the municipal level, I think it's, it does make a very important goal statement that we want to make sure that it's viewed as unlawful and that we can begin to have a strategy around it.
Thank you. Uh, so what will be the stark difference between this particular ordinance, uh, being it is municipal uh opposed from the the state law right there? Just want to make sure we got some clarification from your perspective, you being the sponsor.
Yeah, I mean, I I honestly, Alderman, I I I, again, I'm I'm out of my element if you're asking me the the distinction between uh the levels of charges, there there's probably some uh more experienced folks on the board that could, that could uh, we could glean some experience from. But I mean, it effectively, I think, um, the first charge would be something very much akin to littering, honestly, um, in terms of a a a municipal violation. Um, and knowing that um uh, that would either carry a fine or the the municipal judge's discretion on whether or not um probation um to, you know, diversion uh would all be necessary and certainly would be a facts and circumstance cases. A state charge would carry, I think the alderman from the first alluded to this, and again, I can't, I can't confirm it for sure, but would probably carry closer to more felony charges um uh in the event that it was prosecuted and and um determined guilty.
Understood. So you have no intent on charging someone with a felony of this being a bill that would uh eventually leave somebody potentially that's a teenager with the charge that would uh pretty much uh leave them with a scarred record there for the rest of their lives?
You got it, absolutely. And then that was the, you know, my my intent in working with the Public Safety Director's Office and and um um indirectly through the mayor's office, I assume.
Okay, thank you. My last question will be, is how do you open up your car doors?
You mean, other than with my hands?
Yeah, I'm no, no, I mean, with your hands. How do you open your car door?
I'm thinking about starting to climb in through the sunroof because of COVID.
Um, understood.
Right, uh, yeah, uh, I uh, I try to park in front of my house, right? And uh, I have a key fob and I use the door handle.
Understood. Your car doesn't just magically open for itself, right? You don't have a button with the pop-out locks and it just opens up like a Lamborghini door? Like, most of us, you have to flip that handle and open the door, correct?
I drive an early two thousands Honda, Alderman, so it's it's uh pretty basic.
Understood. Well, I certainly appreciate it. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, will the alderman from the eighteenth yield for questions?
Alderman from the eighteenth will yield a question to Alderman from the third. Alderman from the eighteen. Oh, um.
Yes, I will.
All right, Alderman from the third, please proceed.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the eighteen. Um, I initially heard you say that you feel like this bill is racially profiling or could be utilized um so racially and discriminatory against individuals there in your neighborhood. Um, I also um remember you saying that, you know, this is something that doesn't address the root cause of uh the criminal actions that take place here in the city of St. Louis. Can you give me a just an idea of what do you feel like in this bill or or its intentions? Or its actions, uh, mechanical actions of it? How do you think that it will racially um give the police a a a way of, once again, racially profiling individuals? Or a way that they can utilize it uh discriminatory?
First of all, there may, uh, let me just be very frank. I believe in St. Louis, there are certain neighborhoods they don't want, that uh black people are not wanted. Uh, and let me say this, and even in whether it's north or south, we are east or west, even in the black community with the um uh daily uh false narrative that has been pushed, especially for the last fifty years that I know of uh to to promote fear. There's a book called uh 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 defunding fear. Uh, and it and the other books that shows that even when crime goes down, the media has continued to uh promote black uh to uh build this image of black people as criminals. It has criminalized us. So what happens is that um if you move into a certain, I'm just using an example of racial profiling. Let's say in certain, this city has been pushing for gentrification, has been pushing to get black people out of the city. And also, if a person uh is in a certain neighborhood and they feel that the kids, let's say not just kids, but a uh uh, I'm just using black now, but because that's who it's going to affect more most. If a black person is living in a neighborhood and the um, the residents could feel, could gang up on him and say uh, we don't, uh, some residents just say we are racist. Let's just be perfectly frank, not all. I'm not saying everybody. I'm just saying there are some racists in this city and there's racism. How do I know? First of all, you have a white, fired predominantly white fire department, and you have a predominantly black uh, black.
Respectfully, I want to be respectful of everyone's time. Can we just uh? No, you don't have to be short. I just want you to be germane to the bill, all the person.
Can I, can I just ask you, so I think that it's a possibility that a person can be falsely accused and uh driven out of certain na- driven out of the neighborhood or out of the city. And also, I think that the police, it happened to me, and I was up, I was an older person. One night I was coming from a meeting and the police told me he needed to um make an arrest to uh uh make his night. Uh, night needed to lock me up because he needed to lock somebody up that night, which I was at a a block in the meeting. I told him who I was, and then he went on, but what is my point? My point is, even the police, and I was homeless at one time, and I know, and I've heard it from my some younger people and older peoples too, that and uh the police may harass people and use that police, uh, anyone else can use it, not just whites, but blacks too. Anyone could accuse the person and get together and say that that person was um uh flipping my uh what uh uh flipping my car door and just could, and uh that person could be in jail. Um, and so I think it can happen. If this bill passed, it will happen. And one person, one person is one person too many. And the other thing is teenagers are supervised. We should uh, a lot of their parents right now are in jail because of crack coke, uh, because of of poverty. Crack cocaine is a good example of the fact that uh a lot of black people uh were just simply singled out and put in jail with the same, uh, and so I'm saying it not only happened then, it's happened now, it has happened since slavery, and it will continue to happen. This bill will have some black people with a police record for the rest of their lives, where uh.
Let me, let me stop you just for a quick second, all the, all the person. I just want to get some really good clarification on what you particularly believe and how this bill in in particularly will uh cause racial discrimination. So let's, you know, let's say for instance, a person um does not live in the neighborhood and they see someone walking up pulling door handles or the neighbors do, and they call on a young man who's walking down the street because they feel like that's the person that they saw. Okay, let's say for instance, that person is black and he could be walking through a predominantly white neighborhood, right? Um, are you saying that you think that those people, because they are looking for someone to blame, will potentially just come together collectively and say that we all saw this person pulling door handles? And the police will take their word forward and then lock that person up under the assumption that all of these people have to be right?
That could happen, but also an individual could call whether it's the police or an individual could call and say that person is pulling door handles. Said if it's the law, they have to lock that person up. Some, it doesn't have to be a group, a group conspiracy. It could be an individual police officer, it could be an individual citizen. Uh, it could be a business person who doesn't want the person around and just feel that, let's get these dirt. They may say, let's get this poor person off of these streets because they appear dangerous, so let's get this group of teenagers or older peoples because they don't have anything to do. They maybe just uh exercising their constitutional rights to peacefully assemble. And some people may feel threatened. Some people do feel threatened by African Americans because of the media more than any other group. So they could call to just as uh, that may be a way of uh of uh dealing with the situation of uh removing African Americans off of the street, which has been, which is being done at this current time.
Right, and I and I would not disagree with that there are racial discriminatory practices happening all across the United States. And definitely, I've seen some things in our city, without a doubt. I would not disagree with you. Um, but I'm I'm particularly concerned about just this particular legislation and ensuring that when we talk about racially profiling, that we are looking at it from the perspectives that, you know, are true and real, because a person who would be accused of doing something that they did not do and a person did not visually see and they, and they make a police report, which is what Alderman Odenberg, sorry, Alderman from the sixteenth um is alluding to, is he wants this on record. Um, that person who made or falsified that police report would then be looking at charges themselves after um, it was deemed that these people did, in fact, uh, not necessarily racially profiled, but make a complete and utter lie. Sorry about that. I had a call come in, but completely lied and falsified a police report based on them wanting someone held accountable and blaming someone that they did not potentially see commit that crime. Um, so, you know, in the instance that this bill did go forward, there would still be some sort of a balance. The officers and the individuals in question would have to falsify a police report, make false statements on 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 one individual or two individuals or that group of individuals, and then would have to prove what it is that they seen. Um, and that person would also have the chance to um uh defend themselves and and give that that opposite perspective on what it is they were doing when they were walking down the street and if they were or if they were not pulling door handles and then the police officer should, um, should we have the right officer at the scene? And of course, we're dealing with, you know, there's right and wrong in all jobs. If that police officer does what he's supposed to do, then he should be writing that report up um, the way that the residents or the people who called on it and getting the information from the person who would be considered the victim and the person who would be the the perpetrator, correct?
Uh, what has happened too in in the past and currently, we have pe- we had people that have people on death row who have uh, we have been proven, had that been proven that they didn't do the uh crime and even more serious crimes, not just death row, but even more serious crimes and misdemeanors, whatever. And I've uh known people, and then there's been a case where it's called clearing the books, where the police officers uh have uh have uh violated uh uh citizens, black people in particular, but other citizens too, uh, their rights. Uh, and so it's just been a history. Just to check, so so the answer is, this law, one person is one person's word against another person. If this person is black, uh, poor and black, uh, they're gonna take a uh milk, a milk, a working person, a middle-class person, and especially a white person's word and a police officer's word over that person. And if that police and uh lack everything else, if a police could, I I mean, whether it be the police or someone, some other witness, that person ends up in jail as well as with a police record, just because you're not convicted, it doesn't, it stays on your record anyway. So a a person should ha- uh, so therefore there is no such thing as just when you go looking for a job, for example, to say, well, I just was uh accused. Well, if a person has a charge between hiring a person who was accused of something and one who has never been accused, they're gonna take one. So I'm just saying, when we create police records instead of whether it's diversion or whatever, that makes our, makes keep my constituents less safe. It takes away, we know that it's ineffective, so it takes away uh taxpayers, my taxpayers, the people I represent, taxes, when we are continually making these not only laws but laws and in fact that just that it are ineffective with with the application and continually uh uh promote this false narrative where, for example, uh, so that's, so the answer is profiling as well as taking taxpayers' money, as well as uh getting away from a person's innocence until proven guilty. We just take one person's word and then they are guilty because somebody observed them, uh, uh, said they observed them and uh and so the answer is, not only do I think, do, will it, uh, it will happen. I can go on record saying that's going to happen and if uh regard, so the answer is, yes. It has happened in the past and will continue to happen. And and this is a, and and it's happening with more serious felonies, so we know it will happen too with this misdemeanor, so we can look at the record.
Understood. So there already are laws on the books that that caused this to be some sort of a felony, um, from from my understanding. I can't go into details on it, but um, I know you are a person who looks at preventative measures, and that's what I believe what you spoke about in the, you know, your initial comments and talking about it and the importance of us trying to be proactive before people get to a point where they are looking at committing crimes like this. Would you not see this to some degree as some way of being preventative before they get to that felony step and us being able to step in as the municipal government and say, hey, you know, you're trying to break into the vehicle. We saw you try. Most of those doors were locked, but had you gotten in, that may be breaking and entering. Had you gotten in and stolen the gun, then you stolen the gun. Had you got in and caused thousands of dollars worth of damage, now you're looking at felony uh charges based on your your crimes that have been committed because there there aren't any efforts necessarily to uh deter you from your initial crime, which is just walking up and tampering with, I'm sorry, not tamper, walking up and trying to open up the door of a vehicle that isn't yours in the first place. Could you not see the potential preventative measures in this?
No, uh, there are no, there are any preventative measures with, when you make contact with the uh, the uh criminal justice uh uh um industry. Uh, w- once you make contact with that industry, what usually happen, once you get a police record, this being black is a disadvantage, but once you get a police record, that's two strikes against you. Now, and then you isolate it around pe- around people who are um who are in the same situation. And what happens is um it endangers, so the answer is, uh, it doesn't prevent anything. What it does is lead to going to to first to the uh ju- city jail and then to, which is then to pre- then to the penitentiary, and then what happens is you the influences that around you. And then what happens is you the influences that around you. And then it endangers the community because you have a lot of people who um. Don't uh have a chance of succeeding and then all they do is prey on the community. So the community. Uh so these fears fears will continue. So the answer is no, it doesn't prevent anything. What it does is uh again is uh. Costs the taxpayers' money and put us in more danger. And that's what I and it wastes taxpayers' dollars. Two things I'm, the reason I'm against it. It's totally, it has been proven ineffective. And it wastes taxpayers' money.
In what way does it, has it been proven ineffective?
Because for the last fifty years since we started this law and order thing after. The programs that were taken away, that were social type program were taken away. And we started a public works program called the prison program that focused more mostly on black people. Uh crime has continued to increase. So uh that's why it proves it's ineffective. Because we've spent billions of dollars. Uh building jails, watching mostly black people. And what happens, we still had the same problem. We've tried also, we've tried SBDs. Special Business Districts, which doesn't, it doesn't work. So we've, we not only have hired more police, we've increased tax. Uh not only have we had more people. Not only have we tried just regular police with law, but we've also had some law enforcement officers. Uh I mean, we've had uh additional uh law enforcement officers taxing the taxpayers. When we could take half, it would cost half as much, we would be twice as safe. Uh if we, for example, had uh supervision activity. Uh uh a job, uh a treat, a job for those who uh want a job, drug treatments. Uh for those who have drug problems and viable alternative. And for the teenagers, uh again, the parents, many of the parents have been sent to jail. When uh and then uh you're dealing with um. Uh why they're not under supervision is because you don't have anybody that to supervise them. Because many of them are living, some of them are even living with relatives. So so this has been proven, it doesn't work. And I, through my experience, through books, through studies. It shows it doesn't work. Let's try something different. Let's see if if prevention will work. Cause certainly.
Okay, so what does that look like, Alderman Todd? What do you do if you walk outside and see someone trying to open up your car door? Or open up your neighbor's car door? What are you going to do differently?
What I'm gonna do if they uh uh if they try to open up my car door and don't, I'm gonna lock my car door and I'm not gonna leave anything in my car. If I leave something and then they steal it, will I just say, well, I'd be, no, I would just lock my car door. We, I think people should, we should educate the uh people to please lock, put away packages. Lock your car, do not leave valuable. Uh education is the key. But we can't act out of anger. We should.
I'm still asking, what exactly do you do when you walk outside and see someone trying to open up your car door? What is the particular different action that you are proposing we take? And that's a real question. I'd like to have some real clarity on that.
Let me see, if you walk outside and see somebody uh getting ready to open up your car door. Uh if if they have, if they're tampering, you call, they, we have a law called tampering. If you wanna call the.
Okay, so you're gonna call, so you're gonna call the police, correct?
I mean, if you think a law.
Oh, you're going to call the police.
If I walk out and they leave, I'm just gonna get in my car and go about my business. Let me tell you what I would do personally. I if if I leave something in there, but I'm talking about my constituents, I'm just talking about me personally, essentially made it personal. If if uh if I walk outside and they leave, I'm going to just go and get in my car. Uh if uh if I leave something on it, on uh on my seat personally and they take it. Uh I'm gonna be more careful. I, cause I know um I should uh.
So are you not gonna call the police?
No, if they just steal, no, I'm not gonna call the police if they steal, let's say, uh if they steal an item in my car. I would, if they break a window, uh I had to call the police about some license plates because I needed some new license plate. But if they steal something uh out of the car and I'm careless, well, I I've learned my, I don't think it's worth. Taking up the police's time. I don't think it's worth um uh taking up my time.
So once again, you would not call the police if you saw someone in the commission of a crime on your property? What about one of your constituents? What if you looked out your door and saw one of the elderly people in your ward? Um not being outside and some individual trying to break in their vehicle, looking into the window, trying to try the door handle. What do you do in that particular instance? Do you yell out to them? Do you tell them to leave? Do you call the police? Do you call the resident and let them know? And these are for individuals, let's say, for instance, this bill does not get passed and and someone like Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Ties. Uh and the other individuals who have experienced seeing someone break into their vehicle. Or other people who are watching this video, other constituents out there who've had their car stolen. While sitting at the gas station, walked in the gas station to go and grab something to drink and they walk up and steal their vehicle. How do you propose as an alderperson, as the lawmaker, when someone is saying, somebody needs to do something about this? And you're saying, we should do something different. What specifically are you proposing? That these people do differently? How would you deal with your constituent when they call you and say, Alderman Todd, I'm sorry, not called you. But when you particularly witnessed someone breaking in their vehicle, doesn't matter what they have in it. Let's say, maybe they have nothing in it and somebody's still working to break into their vehicle. What do you do as an alderperson in that instance where you are witnessing a crime in commission? On a on a property that's not yours, but it is one of your constituents?
I would call the police and we have laws against, there are laws on the books already.
So you would call the police to do what? Get them to write a police report?
Uh what I do, I would do what I tell, always tell my constituents, I wouldn't say anything to the person. I would call the police, uh I I would call the police and report what I saw. I was so.
For instance, they caught him and they locked him up. What would you, would you be a witness? Would you go out and give your statement? Because that person could be charged with a felony at that point. Would you come outside and say, I'm I I called the police and my my constituent didn't see it? But I did witness this happen. Um and the police ask you, did you see it? Do you, do you write up the, not write up the report, do you give them? Um uh the answers that they need as a witness who watched a crime in commission?
Well, if uh if I witness uh witness a crime that's being committed by against my neighbor. Absolutely, uh let's say somebody breaking one of my neighbor's house. Yes, I would be a witness that the person broke into the house. Burglary is illegal. Uh so yeah, uh breaking in somebody's car is illegal. So the answer is. If I, if I'm, I will be a witness. I don't think people should go around stealing from anyone. Let me make that crystal clear. But I don't want, but you have material evidence. If you, if a person is stealing and has. Has items in their hands, that and it belongs to somebody, that's called possession of stolen, you have. I'm talking about that's different than this law where somebody called and say, he was touching my door handle, he was flipping my door handle.
That's what I potentially just asked.
I I saw him flipping some door handles versus I saw him breaking in the car.
Well, that's what breaking in the car is. The first step is to open up the door handles. Do you open up your car doors utilizing your hand by pulling the door handle? How do you open up your car doors?
I open them up. And if someone opened up one of my neighbor's door handles and went on and he kept going. Uh I got, well, if someone was trying to take, if when if somebody uh was flipping door handles. And didn't go in and take anything, of course, I would, uh I would be happy that there was just no incident. I wouldn't wanna waste the police officer's time. I I even had a person locked up. Now, if someone takes something and I see it, I take something from my neighbor and break it, and I think the law is being broken. Uh of course, I would be a witness and take care of that, but I don't, but I, if they touch a door handle, I start flipping door handles and keep going. And are not harassing, are not doing anything else, I would just uh be happy that didn't anything happen.
So you would not, if you saw someone walking down your block as the alderperson and watching someone try multiple door handles? And you've never seen this person on your block before, you would not, as a lawmaker, call. On behalf of your residents to say that there is someone trying to break in cars down the street. You'd wait. And to someone walk past you with some materials that didn't look to be theirs, which you wouldn't know in the first place. Uh to call and report that there is a possible uh crime in commission while that person is walking past you with these items. That they just didn't walk, uh didn't have when you initially saw them pulling door handles. Is that, is that pretty much what you're saying? You would wait until they actually stole something from someone to make that report?
I think we should wait uh uh until uh we have uh. I think we should either use the uh tampering law or wait until um.
Is that not the opposite of being proactive, sir?
I don't think uh we've been proactive when we uh again, I think we're adding laws to. Uh I think that law can be abused. I don't, uh I don't think most people would do it, but I think there would be instances. Where that law can, uh people can use that law as a as a tool to deracial profile people. Which has been done in the past, which right now there are a lot of, uh we could prevent crime. But what what do we do? We lock black people up, who could easily, which costs twice as much, we could prevent twice as much crime. We could have say twice as much tax, minute tax dollars. We could have parents and other guardians at home watching these children. We could be using these funds for streets, farm street, healthcare. Uh and uh recreation. We could be doing all of those things with our tax dollars. Instead, we got people who promote this false narrative and teaching hate against black people. This is just teaching hate, nothing but hate and some, and scoring some political opportunistic points. And so the answer is yes, you're doing it now. We're doing it right now. We is, we we know that this doesn't work. We have studies that show it doesn't work. So why?
Can you pull up one of those studies and give it to us?
It's called locking up our own by James Foreman Junior. There's a lady named Penny Hess overturning the culture of violence. There's another uh Broken Hearts of America by Walter Johnson. There's roots, there's quiet roots.
And it's specifically about pulling door handles?
No, it deals with the way to prevent crime in the first place, whether it's pulling door handles. Whether it's, it doesn't matter what kind of crime. I don't think people should be victims of any kind of crime.
Have you taken any proactive steps to take those books? And and create a law that is preventative here?
Yes, I have.
In particular to car thefts?
Yes, I've had a resolution to deal with drug treatment. I've had a resolution to deal, look at, look at the resolution about green, clean green space. Helps meth, it reduces crime. Cut uh uh like I've just had a resident call me yesterday. A tall grass that the sports department did not cut. A person jumped out and killed a person. I had another resident who was a developer. I won't call her name because she's not here. They didn't cut the, all the uh growth around the bottom of those trees. People pull out, four people pull out automatic weapons on her. So we're talking about when you have tall grass, when you, uh when you, when the city, the city needs to use that money. That we are violating the law ourselves with and talking about locking up some poor people.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, so why don't we talk about enforcing the law that, why don't we talk about enforcing the law that we make that the city is violating? Six feet tall grass and I, I tell you, right on on my street in the water, I went by the Thursday in the alley. Eight, if grasses between, I got out of my car, walk, the grass is six feet one.
Point of order, Mr. President, point of order, Mr. President.
Okay, uh the grass is tall as I am, so I'm saying.
Alderman, please state your point of order.
Uh I I don't believe the six foot grass and the door handles are are related, sir.
Uh you're correct. Uh Alderman from the eighteenth, um please keep your uh your. Your um comments germane to the subject matter. Uh the Alderman from the third has been very, very specific in his questioning. Uh and um he's asking for very, you know, succinct, uh you know, uh direct answers. And I think he has left no um mystery for anyone who's listening. Uh as to the question that he's answered, he's he's requesting of you. Uh so I'm gonna ask Alderman from the third if you will restate your question. If you still would like to restate your question, you can. And uh continue the question of Alderman from the eighteenth, or you still have the floor?
I would say thank you to the Alderman of the eighteenth. So I really appreciate your answers. I don't disagree with you. In terms of there being discriminatory prac- discriminatory practices that have taken place for years against African Americans, black people. Chinese, there are a lot of minorities that have been indiscriminately um placed in this system. And you know, I can, I can't speak from the Asian perspective or I can't speak from Mexicans, but I I see the. The racism that exists here in America for anybody um who is a minority. So I I understand your frustration, sir. And I appreciate you answering the questions. Thank you. Uh well, Alderman Stevens. Uh Alderman from the twelve year for questioning?
Alderman from the twelfth, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the third?
Um respectfully, no, I will not. Uh I'm not a co-sponsor nor sponsor of this bill. And I respect you for asking, uh first listing my opinion, but will not be offering it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Stevens. Well, Alderwoman uh from the fifteenth.
Alderman from the fifteenth, will you yield the question to the Alderman from the third? Alderman from the fifteenth? All right, uh Alderman from the fifteenth hasn't responded.
All right, thank you. So I didn't see who else was against this bill, but I'm very curious to get some perspectives on uh. Exactly what is racially discriminatory about this? And why it is that every time we talk about poor people, we gotta talk about black people. All poor people in this city ain't black. And I wanna make that clear. There are some very wealthy black people. One of the billionaires in this city is black. And I guarantee you, he doesn't want his car door pulled off. Most of us in the Board of Aldermen are yanking your door handle every day to get inside of your vehicle. And then when you're inside, you yank another handle to get out of the vehicle, period, point blank. That is your car. It is your personal property. And for anybody to look outside and see someone trying to get inside of something that they've locked or they didn't lock, any of their possessions, period. It does something internally um to you as a person and you feel violated. And the individuals who have had the chance to yank on that door handle or try to enter your property, who have not seen or felt. Any type of repercussion for that action. Feels that that there'll be nothing done about it. And they'll continue to do those things is why, which is why we're talking about multiple door handles. Most of the crimes that happen in the city and people who are calling the Board of Aldermen or the mayor's office, they're calling about speeding. How do you get into his car? Right? They're calling about cars that are being stolen. How do you get into cars? You open up the door handle. This is nothing, I believe, other than a preventative measure that gives the police, once again, an extra tool in the toolbox to be able to say specifically. That you can't do that. And if we are realistically trying to prevent people from getting felonies and putting them into the system long term. And giving them um uh what what we would consider more racially discriminatory uh treatment. Within this system, then we will be doing them a service and anybody a service. By putting something on the books that's more municipal that won't stick on them for the rest of their lives and saying, hey, this is a slap on the wrist. Thirty days, some community service, five hundred bucks. That's a slap on the wrist for uh attempting a carjacking. Then actually, I'm sorry, not a carjacking, attempting a car theft, then actually getting inside that vehicle, causing thousands of dollars worth of damage. Or stealing thousands of dollars worth of materials or or somebody's possessions and being caught in possession of somebody's materials. Or somebody's uh possessions and then having to deal with the actual state laws that exist. We cannot blame and 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 to Alderman Stefan, Alderman from the twelve ward. Um you didn't necessarily say the circuit attorney, but we can't blame the circuit attorney. For all of these people's actions out here and say that there is no enforcement. There is some enforcement being done within the city. Of course, we all know that there needs to be a step up in enforcement, but there also needs to be a force up. A step up in protection for individuals who are out here saying that they see a crime in commission. No resident wants to hear that nothing can be done about it when they finally get a a police officer to come to their door. And hear it, hear what it is that they've witnessed. Nobody wants to get told, oh, well, you know, if they didn't actually get in the car, there's nothing that we can do about it. I'm sorry. Uh, I, I heard you, Alderman Stevens. I'll read what he said. He said the circuit attorney is not dealing with municipal. Uh, make sure I read that correctly. Wanna be respectful. Uh, circuit attorney does not handle municipal cases, Alderman from the third. You are absolutely correct. And I was not alluding to the municipal cases. I'm alluding to the more federal cases. I mean, the, the state cases, those cases that we don't have uh, any jurisdiction over. Which is why I believe you were saying, which is why I was gonna ask you a question, um, why I believe it was being said that. This is, you know, nothing will happen with this bill. There's nothing that we can do about it. Um, there is something that we can do about it. Being preventative starts in the mind. And you give people the tools that they need to think out whatever uh, crime that they're thinking about committing. They actually drive through these neighborhoods before they hop out and start trying door handles and ask themselves, what is the likelihood of them getting caught? What could and will be uh, the, the consequences of their actions? Or how would the neighborhood react? Who's outside? Who's watering their grass? Who's looking out the window? Who has cameras? Who does not? Some of these people walk these blocks before they actually try the door handles to see if someone's gonna look at them and stare at them and be able to identify them. Based off the description that they seen during the day, so they can come back at night and be anonymous. So us having the conversation, us having more tools in the toolbox, people knowing that, hey, just touching the door handle. Of a car that is not yours and multiple door handles, that's illegal. That gives criminals an entirely different mentality when they go out and they try to break in cars at this point. Now, no, absolutely not. The police is not gonna be there for every instance of this. No, the police won't be there five minutes after someone's tried your door handle, right? But you most certainly have the power of the residents at that point where you can call and say, hey, look out your window. Get some camera footage of this person, so we can nail them. We can ensure that it's them, and we can call, hey, don't do that, stop it. I'm sorry, excuse me. Um, we can talk to our, our neighbors and talk to our residents who are on separate blocks, who are around the corner and say, hey, there's a person in a red shirt. And uh, and, and, and blue jeans with white shoes. He looks to be black, or he looks to be white, he looks to be brown, whatever that description is. And we give that to the individuals whom we live next to, who are our eyes and ears, who are also gonna call us after our cars have been broken into. And they walk down the street and see glass on the ground, or see that our things are out of place. We lean on our neighbors, and our neighbors are supposed to lean on the police department. They're supposed to lean on the, all the people lean on the departments to do services and render the services that they pay for on a regular basis. And when those services aren't rendered, just to allude to Alderman Todd's uh, answers, you know, people hopping out of high grass, shooting up the city. These people are hopping back in the vehicles, and most of those vehicles aren't theirs. Somebody has lost their vehicle to someone who stole it. And for that person to steal it, he had to pull the door handle. That is how we get in our vehicles. Most of us aren't riding around in Lamborghinis and other cars that you can just pop a button and a door opens itself and lets you in. Downtown, right now, there are thousands of cars being broken into regularly, regularly. You read what's going on down to hell. It's, it's happening in my neighborhood. I'm just speaking specifically now on places that we know for sure, for sure, has a lot of conversation being talked about right now. People are sick of, of being reactive, and that is what we are doing. We're saying that, hey, let's just be reactive to this. There's already a state law out there. Nobody's respecting the state law. They saying to hell with that. Let's, let's, let's get this felony. Cause we ain't getting caught anyway. The police ain't catching us. And then when, when, when we finally do get caught to some degree, and you know, I hear what everybody said, like get right back out, however you wanna twist the turn that. People are not respecting the laws as they exist right now, regardless of who's enforcing them, regardless of what those laws are. What we're doing right now, right this second, does not work. And we are still leaving room for individuals to be reacted upon. Oh, you broke into the car, you stole my stuff. Now the police should be able to do something if they catch you with the items that I gave them a description of. They stole my two thousand dollar purse. All my kids this, all my kids that. I hope you catch them with it. But how often are you catching the criminals out here who broke into your vehicle with the stolen merchandise they broke into your vehicle and took? Not often. People are selling that stuff on the street. They putting it up on a, uh, uh, on Facebook Marketplace. They are selling these things. Nobody's getting caught with the same materials that they went out there and stole. But people are witnessing individuals walking around. Imagine the people that are on their way to the club or walking down the street and see somebody trying multiple vehicles and just say, hey, I need to park my car in a different place. Let me, let me just move my vehicle. I'm not trying to get my car broken into like somebody else, you know? And they're not gonna call the police and wait for the police to get there because they feel like nothing will be done when the police pull up. And that's not because of the police officers. That's because they've seen multiple instances of things that did not happen or transpire the way that, that would have made that, that, that person or that resident of the city feel comfortable. After they watched a crime in commission. We all, some of us have seen crimes in commission and get no avail when the police come. I have residents that have watched people on camera walk up and pull their door handles and try to get into their vehicles. And when the police come, they, 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 they say, hey, you know, that person said that he wasn't trying to get in your car. This is a real thing. They just said, they looked into it, they, you know, you had a mirror reflection. And they were trying to see themselves. Don't come up on my car. Don't touch nothing that's not yours. It's as simple as that. That's normal. That should be normal. For, for, for human beings. And it's not a normality in the city. People feel like they can do whatever they want and any protections that we can give these residents. Any protection we can give homeowners, visitors to the city, and saying that we are serious about individuals trying to take things that are not theirs. That's a step in the right direction. There is no wrong direction at this point, because there is no right direction at this point. There is no pipeline that we've seen that reduced the amount of car thefts. Yes, we have a reduction in crime, and that is great. And to everybody who helped uh, uh, get their reduction, we appreciate it. But that's a reduction in homicides. That's not a reduction in the amount of people getting shot. What that says is the hospitals are getting better at saving people. So shout out to the, the, the medical professionals out here. What it is not doing is preventing the circumstances in which those shootings happen. Most of the shootings in this city are happening in and out of vehicles. People are pulling up with these big ass guns in cars that ain't theirs, with stolen tags. And why aren't people saying something about it? Because they feel like nothing will be done. We need to put as many preventative measures out there as possible that we can somehow control and get individuals who are uh, in commission of crimes. If we can, get them to some type of rehabilitation. If we got all these programs out here that people are, are alluding to, then this gives us some type of chance if we do get them locked up for thirty days. I'm not against going to jail. For individuals who are committing crimes against other people. You don't commit a crime against yourself, then that's up to you. You gotta deal with that. But if you're out here stealing hard on people's things, taken from children, taken from visitors who come to the city and spend dollars that gives us some sort of a tax base while everybody else is jumping ship. This is, this is a change for us to put another tool in the toolbox for those officers who are out here working hard every day trying to build us a new atmosphere. And for anybody who says different, you need to explain yourself. So you can be held accountable to your constituents who are out there asking for the same resources that we're trying to put on the table right now. Because the city residents are saying, do something about this. They not calling the chief because they don't have access to the chief. They're calling us members of the Board of Alderman, and they're calling the police officers. They're calling nine one one. They're calling the dispatches and trying to give descriptions out. So I appreciate the Alderman from the sixteen and everybody who understands the importance of us at least doing something at this particular point. That gives the police officers once again, another tool, something other than I can do something about this. So I stand, of course, uh, in support of this bill. I also would like to be added as a co-sponsor. And I urge all of the, the, the Board of Alderman uh, members here to really think about what you say when you're talking about racially profiling. All people in this city that's poor and black. Yeah, the majority of them are. Absolutely. But we can't just keep on talking about, poor people don't understand laws, because we do. Poor people don't understand right from wrong, because we do. We not animals. And the more and more you try to, to, to make us seem uh, like the actions we take are incomprehensible to us. We just don't know. Our teenagers just don't. This ain't all about teens. You got grown people out here stealing cars, grown folks. Plenty of grown people. These teenagers don't really have access to all the vehicles. People that are out here shooting up the city are over the age of twenty one, the majority of them. Yes, the kids and the shooters are getting younger, but the people who are driving these cars are not. There are plenty instances where teenagers have stolen cars, absolutely, without a doubt. But somebody had to teach them how to steal their car. And it was somebody that came before them who taught them what to do and what not to do, and there was nothing done about it. Not a thing, which is why they were able to teach them how to do it the same way. Why is everybody running around trying door handles? You do what works. It works. You don't get locked up for trying door handles. It works. You can tell somebody that, hey, just go try as mean as you can until you get in one. Ain't nobody gonna do nothing about it. Nobody's gonna say nothing. Criminals do what works. Nobody's out here trying to figure out a brand new way to break into a vehicle, utilize some Mission Impossible skills. It's not happening like that. People are doing the most basic thing that they can do to get in and out as quick as they possibly can. And what we are simply saying is, you can't do that no more. You can't. And whether it's gonna happen continually or not, we're going to try at least to put a PSA out there. We're gonna try at least to let you know that the police can, can do something about it if the residents have said something about it at this point. We study saying, if you see something, say something, we'll do something. And they're asking us to do something. So we are doing something. And for those individuals who wanna do nothing and talk about how racially profiling this is and how much of a, 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 of a, of a waste of time this is, we wasting our time. Tell that to your constituents when they're asking you what's being done about all of the crimes in this city. Tell them that we put a bill up, and you said absolutely not, and didn't propose one proactive step. That gives us a, 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 another tool to do something about what it is they're asking you to do something about. Because if you're not bringing nothing to the table and all you're doing is taking something out, you're just running your mouth. Now that's political ponder. Thank you, Mr. President. With that, I yield.
Thank you so very much, Alderman from the third. Um, now, I think Alderman from the twenty first, you had your, you have your hand up for the first time, I believe. Alderman from the twenty first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a couple of questions, and my colleague from the third ward asked most of them, uh, most of them. Uh, and he has failed to get an answer from those who oppose this legislation. So I doubt that I will be able to get the answer from the people who have failed to yield to him to answer those questions, but I'm gonna give it a try anyway. Will the Alderman from the twelfth ward yield for questioning?
Alderman from the twelfth will yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty first.
Alderman from the twenty first, in keeping with my response to the Alderman from the third, I will not. Again, I'm not a co-sponsor. I am not a sponsor. And I don't leave my statement at any point, point of personal privilege to president. I don't believe my statement at any point.
No, Alderman from the twelfth, at this point, you, you answer yes or no. It's, Alderman from twelfth uh, has refused, uh, uh, yield for question. Alderman from the twenty first, still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kenny Alderman from the third ward yield for question.
Alderman from the third will yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty first. Alderman from the twenty first, please proceed.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Alderman from the third, can you tell me how many carjackings have happened, you know, in the past year in the third ward?
Uh, I, I would say well, well over fifty. Well over.
Well over fifty. Absolutely. I, I think so too. I'm looking at, at crime stats. That's why I asked. You're absolutely right. Can you just take a wild guess how many carjackings have happened in the fifteenth ward?
Uh, ten.
Aw, man, you're being too generous. I see two uh, right here. But ten is a good number. Can you tell me, uh, Alderman, how many carjackings have happened in the? Let's see. This is a good one. Let's go with this in the twelfth ward.
Uh, let's see, uh, I'm, 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 I'ma roll with uh, three.
Zero, zouch, nah, nada. Absolutely nothing. I wish that was the case in my ward in the past three years. Matter of fact, I could tell you all together. In two thousand and seventeen, when I first elected Alderman, we had two hundred and seventy six carjackings uh, in the twenty first ward. Two thousand and eighteen, it was one hundred and forty three. Two thousand and nineteen, it was, we had a dip. Thank God, we had seventy eight. In two thousand and twenty, I'm not exactly sure, but I do know as of this year, I have had thirty one carjackings in the twenty first ward. Uh, people just walking by, stealing cars, that's part. Uh, people actually mugging ladies that have their cars. I had two singers in my ward, two singers. One lives on the forty four hundred block of Red, but the other lives on a forty two hundred block of North Taylor. Two singers. One is, one is well over the age of seventy. The other is sixty three. Both of them were mugged at gunpoint, with a gun to their head for their cars.
Wow.
And we called the police, you know, Alderman, you know what response we got? We didn't get any uh, police response ab, absolutely at, at all. Something I voiced my frustration with the captain, with the major and with the chief over. Um, called nine one one, got a busy tone. Absolutely ridiculous. As I, I was kind of, uh, I found it funny that the Alderman from the eighteenth said that he would call the police. Uh, you know, in my ward, uh, we, we can't even get through the police department. But I guess when you live one block away from Dale Mar, you may have a better chance. Uh, and I'm saying also say that. If we don't support this legislation, we are not arming the police department with the tools that they need. Uh, uh, to stop this from happening in the communities in which it's happening in. Carjackings is happening everywhere. People are temping with cars everywhere. I tell you what, I'm, I'm, I'm at City Hall right now. I guarantee you, I can go in a parking lot right now and just go start putting on doors and opening up doors and see what's in it. I guarantee you, I can do it right now. If we can do it downtown, we know we can do it anywhere else. Uh, but if we are not arming our police department with the tools that they need to uh, uh, to fight against this in a sensible way. Uh, and I think that, you know, Alderman, I think that the Alderman from the sixteenth has done a pretty good job, a pretty good job in, in changing this bill. Uh, uh, adding some more teeth to it and also still being lenient while working with the mayor's office and the Department of Public Safety to make sure that we are not. Over criminalizing something like this. But the problem to me is, we're not criminalizing it at all. And we could, we can continue to talk about the root causes of crime. We can say that people need economic access, people need opportunities, people need social programs. We, and it's true, we need all of those things, but we also need police. We also need real enforcement. Um, um, no one in my ward has said, I don't want police. No one in my ward said, don't, don't protect me, don't keep my street safe. And I would think that is the same in your ward as well and everybody else's ward. Um, I'm confused by some of my colleagues' uh, uh, remarks today with this. I'm, I'm confused. I'm completely perplexed. Doesn't really make sense to me. Uh, that was all the questions I had, Alderman. That was all the questions I had. I appreciate you for, for answering them. Uh, and I appreciate you even more so uh, for, for staying up for this bill. I believe I am a co-sponsor on this legislation. Uh, and matter of fact, if I could, I would tell the clerk, remove the Alderman from the sixteenth as a main sponsor, make me the main sponsor if I could. So I appreciate you, Alderman Odenberg. Thank you for this, and I will be voting yes for this legislation. Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'll try one more time, just, just for the fun of it. With the, with the Alderman from the twelfth ward yield for question.
Alderman from the twelfth will yield for questioning.
There are times a charm.
No.
Okay.
It's performative, no.
Alderman from the twenty first, the Alderman from twelfth, you have uh, refused to yield for question.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. President. I think it's unfortunate that he will not yield to my questions, you know? He, he support, he supports reforming the Board of Alderman, whatever that means, but he won't even yield to questions and have not even sponsored one piece of legislation. But that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield.
I make. Uh, uh, Alderman from, Alderman from the twelfth, you do not have the floor. Uh, you could raise your hand and be recognized later, but you do not have the floor. Alderman, Alderman from the eleventh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, permission to speak again on the bill?
Please, 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 you know.
Thank you. We haven't even gotten to speed humps yet, so um, hang in there. Uh, I just wanted to clarify a few things. Um, one, I don't know about anyone else's ward, but we seem to not really have, we seem to not have teenagers doing this. Um, we seem to have a lot of uh, grownups doing this, and I'm not saying teenagers aren't doing it, but that just seems to be the case and what I hear from the police. Um, and they also seem to not always reside in the city. Um, I live in, I'm in far south city and. and um border the county, and we seem to have an influx of folks coming into the city just to do this. And um like the Alderman from the sixteenth said, it is, it's pretty organized sometimes. Sometimes it's not. But um, sometimes it is, and I know we're all just speaking from our own experiences today. Um, and I don't know what the actual data is on uh, you know, ages and all and profiles of folks doing this. Um, and with that said, again, I'm not looking to ruin someone's life over this, but I am looking for some respite in this. Uh, we've had break-ins for years, you know, in our neighborhood and around, and it's not, it is not new. But it is now to the point where people are walking up and down the street and through our yard, I mean, day, night. I came home from a walk the other day, and a guy's just in my driveway, just helping himself. I've even had people just sit down and, you know, the picnic benches. So I think that are the furniture in my yard. So I'm I'm, my whole point in this is that something there are, there do have, there has to be a consequence because otherwise this it is just going to continue to be a free-for-all. Um. I think what the Alderman from the sixteenth said is valid, and because this is becoming more and more rampant, and I'm sure it has been worse in other parts of the city, and yes, I'm sure that um, folks in other neighborhoods are starting to see more um recently, but people will start taking matters in their own hands, and that is also um a concern, too. And a lot of this is a function of the circuit attorney's office not following up on cases and there being no consequences. And I think that that's a lot of the frustration for folks. And I think a lot of this, and I want to speak for the Alderman from the sixteen board, but when nothing is being done, I think that, you know, our residents and constituents are asking us for us to do something, and this is within our purview to do something. Um, and I also want to clarify that in my case, um, you know, a lot of times we just let people walk in and around and flip door handles, and then we just don't call the police because, again, I whatever, they're not really causing, you know, any harm, but we did catch someone inside our vehicle. And the police came quickly. They just happened to be two blocks away. And the police, this was not a matter of us suspecting someone flipping door handles. This was a matter of us seeing it, it was a matter of us being on camera, and it's a matter of the police responding quickly. This wasn't like, oh, I, somebody in a red sweatshirt. And I think it's ridiculous to expect people to shrug their shoulders. Um, again, we're not doing, no one's being prosecuted right now, and nothing's getting better. It's just getting worse. And I think that for us to be like, well, from the left of the car unlocked, or, oh, they just stole some quarters. Okay, that's fine, but in my family, we also have lost tools out of a car that my husband needs to go to work the next day and use. And there are a lot of people, when they lose something like that, um, that impacts their job. The insurance check takes months to come, and they don't have, they can't not show up at to work without tools. So just to pretend that this is completely victimless is also really naive. And I think it's somewhere we have to strike a balance on our quality of life. And also not, I don't want to throw people more, you know, further into the criminal justice system for some, you know, for stealing some coins, but clearly, this is a problem, and clearly, we are elected to address this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, all the woman. All the one from the first.
Mr. President, Mr. President, members of the board, is the Alderman from the sixteenth here, and if he will, would he yield, please?
Alderman from the sixteen will yield the question to all the one from the first.
I will, yes.
All the one from the first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderman. Um, so I think the thing that I I listen to, it's good to have young people come and then people who have been fighting a battle with for a long time, because that's Alderman Todd, but the new people, Alderman Stevens, I I hear some of this stuff. I think the thing that I never was on board with this was about the term of imprisonment. And so, as I understand this bill, it is the act of attempting uh to tempt, to get into an a a a vehicle. Is there something less than imprisonment we could use? Is that something that could we continue to do um community service? Could we uh do fines? Um, so the imprisonment kind of thing bothers me a lot, okay? And I have said I was gonna support this, but there is, is there some? Do we really need to imprison people for flipping door handles? See, because it's, to me, it's different if you actually get in the car, then you have done this, broken the state law, and then you're talking to a felony tampering. But if we're just talking about pulling up handles, is that something we want to imprison people for?
Thank you, Alderman. I appreciate your question. I think that my my live reaction is no, I don't think a a a tampering charge or an attempted burglary charge of a municipal violation uh is an immediate uh sentence, uh sentence to to prison uh or jail. And and quite frankly, I I I don't think that's um the case here. That's why I, we kind of work really hard with the Public Safety Director's Office to first uh install that if there is a violation uh that there's immediate referral to uh, you know, community outreach service programs, diversion, et cetera, and if a second offense uh by the same individual is committed within ninety days of that first offense, then the there could be, right? A municipal judge could.
I understand what it says.
Yeah, subject to that fine. So uh fine or imprisonment. Uh, I don't think a municipal judge, again, this is municipal violation, very much akin to littering. So eh eh ninety days is on the books right now for for local city ordinances. Uh, we also work with the the Public Safety Director's Office to limit that to just thirty days. I feel like after a first, second, or third chance, there maybe the municipal judge, I don't want to tie their hands that they could have a discretion that uh maybe this individual needs to see some shock treatment in prison for for thirty days or not. Um, you know, I I kind of wanted to leave that discretion, but it certainly is a last resort. I think we really are uh forcing it as a very last resort uh for for a municipal judge.
Okay, so I don't know if you, I've actually, because when I was a public defender, I had to visit the workhouse. Uh, I was the chair of public safety when we built the criminal justice center. I've been out to Jefferson City where they let you walk down and lock, 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 turn all the locks. But what I, I started out in juvenile, and so what I hate is when kids get locked up or young people get locked up because it doesn't help them. It teaches them skills that we don't want them to know, okay? Because you get locked up with people who teach them other things. So um, when I hear the Alderman from the eighteenth talking about racial profiling, it has been a very real thing. He's worried about that if a black person is in the sixteenth ward, I'm just gonna use your ward, and they don't, people don't think that they belong there, that they'll call the police and say, hey, they're flipping the the uh handles, and that will be racial profiling, because maybe they're not flipping the handles. And there's a reason why he's worried about that, because that has happened in the past to black men. And um, not to just say about white people, black people jumped on three strikes and you're out during the Clinton administration, which I never was for, and that was a gigantic failure, okay? When I was growing up, marijuana, oh my God, you should not have marijuana. That's so horrible. Now we're selling it. So uh, I'm just saying, it, for me, I don't want the imprisonment in there, and I would also like to say, um, instead of saying for a second subsequent violation within ninety days, would you be a meaningful to say a third subsequent violation in ninety days? If you can't, you know, you can't take the imprisonment out of it. But I just don't think imprisonment for flipping doors is a good thing, and I couldn't really put my hand on it before, because I I am in, I'm in my feelings right now, I'll tell you, because my constituents observed this, and they called the police, and I was just so angry because the police said, nothing we can do. So I do want something that we can do. I want the police to know this is illegal. There's no good purpose for you to be driving, go going down the street and um flipping handles, but if you don't get in it, I don't I I don't want to give you a prison sentence. I I don't want you to be in jail. Jail does not. I know people think that that'll make them stop. It doesn't. Jail makes a lot of people who don't, uh, who maybe just did something crazy. Um, they get in there with people who know how to do a lot, lot of other things that are really problem problematic. And they come out sometimes uh broken and or they come out saying, oh, that wasn't anything, and let me do the next step, and let me do the next step. So one, would you be open instead of making it a second subsequent violation to just changing second to third within ninety days? And two, would you be open to striking out term of imprisonment? Uh, and especially thirty days, that's a very long time. Um, so just I know I'm at the end, and so I I wasn't in this, so I can't, I'm not criticizing you. I'm just trying to look at something that makes me comfortable. What about uh seven-day shock time or something like that? Thirty days is just a long time for flipping handles, so that's just my questions.
Yeah, Alderman, uh, first, I think you've spoke really well on this and and have made some great points, and and I appreciate um the, you know, your candor and and you speaking on this. Uh, honestly, at this point, I'm not inclined to make any decisions or any further changes uh to the bill. I I thought we we came to a really good place of compromise with lessening the imprisonment time uh as well as making sure that we we underscore the uh deferment and the potential for probation instead. So again, I appreciate you. I I really do, and I and I respect everything you've said, but at at this point, I'd I'd like the bill to to be perfected and voted on uh as is.
And when you say we came to a compromise, we being who?
We mean the Public Safety Director's Office, both uh uh Public Safety Director Isom and the the Mayor's Deputy Chief Chief of Staff. Now, they may tell you that they would also love to live without imprisonment. Um, but uh that's the nature of compromise. I think something sits with them that maybe isn't a hundred percent what they wanted, but for the most part, I think this bill steps towards a lot of the the campaign promises the administration made and and the values to which they're trying to seek policy on.
Why do you think thirty days is better than seven-day shock time for flipping? I'm literally saying we're flipping handles, uh handles, because again, when you get into a car, then you are getting into something that's different than flipping handles. And now you're um looking at a state offense, and I've tried tampering one, two, three cases before. And so um I'm I'm wanting to make them know that it is something serious, it is not acceptable behavior. But why wouldn't seven-day shock time be better than thirty days? And I hear you're not gonna change it. I'm just trying to hear your understanding.
Thirty days is kind of just appropriate. It's 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 far less than uh other municipal violations, quite honestly, in terms of the the potential. Again, I think the important thing here is the potential for imprisonment. This is, i- in some ways, this is a a little bit of an academic uh conversation. Um, but but I I do appreciate it, and I I just think, you know, having it be watered down from what it really is ninety days potentially imprisoned to thirty was inappropriate compromise. And um, you know, in my mind, again, personally, my opinion, the the a potential uh proper punishment.
So what I'm gonna tell you is gonna happen, nobody's gonna put anybody in jail for thirty days for flipping, and I wouldn't as a judge. Also, um, and the reason why our workhouse was so full of people is because the judges don't give correct bond hearings. Um, and even Judge Edwards came and testified before a committee of that. And so then a lot of things that we had with the workhouse uh were problems with judges. Everybody uh jumped on uh Judge Edwards or the administration or whatever, but a lot of it was judges are not following the law. And I can't imagine any judge um imprisoning somebody for flipping a door handle. Um, if you get in that vehicle now, that's a whole other thing, but flipping a door handle and a stand for thirty days is harsh. I am going to um support this, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna come right back and uh introduce a board bill to take that thirty days out and look at just doing community service, because I don't, I I think you guys are wrong in um thinking that that makes people uh change their behavior. It just hardens people up a lot of times when they're locked up. People think it that it works. It just does not. Um, and I would invite you to just go and talk to some of the people in juveniles sometime. My heart was broken. I would get these people out of juvenile, and the next thing I know, they were in misdemeanors, then they would be in felonies. And all the lockup time that they spent, that the people that was locked up the most did not get better. They uh learned other skills that I wish they didn't, and so they got worse. So um, I'm still gonna support it, but I I I don't think that thirty days lockup is a a a good uh number. And um some kind of shock time, if I was a judge, if I went to shock them, might it be a day or say, so just to make them say, hey, listen. Um, don't do that. I will say you can get uh your uh records uh expunged. That is something you can do. But I do, um, I've had juveniles that got locked up because they got certified, and they got uh attacked, and that is on my heart now, and I'm, like I said, I'm just remembering, because I haven't done this for a long time. And I don't want to damage anybody's child or even grownup. I do just want them to know that uh people have a right to live in quiet enjoyment in their own neighborhoods, and they have a right to expect that if they park their vehicle, it's not their fault uh for you to be going up and down the streets. It, I I do encourage people to uh lock your vehicles, and I always lock mine, even in my garage, I lock mine. But um if they don't do that, that's not their fault. If you decide to get into their vehicle and steal something or um even create uh damage in the vehicle, break stuff in it or anything like that, that is not the people's fault who did it. That is your responsibility. At least that is how I was raised, that my actions are mine, and I'm responsible for them. But I do think you're making a mistake on the thirty days, and I will come back with something, looking at, see if we can do something else. But I do know you've uh worked on it a long time. Um, so I am still gonna support it. Have no further remarks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, all the woman. All the one from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I just firstly, want to thank um the Alderman from the first for her remarks um just now. I think that that sums up a lot of of my feelings as well, and I I kind of just want to recap some of the things that we've heard today and some of the things that that my own constituents have experienced and um expressed frustration with, that there are problems with nine-one-one, that if you're getting through to nine-one-one uh that you're getting dismissed, that the the concerns that you have, that you're you're complaining about that there is criminal activity are getting dismissed. I had nine-one-one tell a resident of mine that someone had had broken down their gate and had a gun out in their backyard and said, well, Missouri is an open carry state, and do, like, would not send a police officer when they had broken, they were trespassing with a weapon out displayed. They were brandishing a weapon. Um, so there are issues with the nine-one-one system that we are not that information is not being taken seriously um when there, when there are crimes being reported, um when people are breaking into cars, that cars are being opened. Those are crimes that are already on the books that should necessitate at least sending to an officer. Um, if if the officer can't get out in time, that's one thing, but dispatch needs to be sending them to an officer or taking a police report, because that's the second thing that my constituents have reported, as well as some of our colleagues have reported, that police reports are not being taken, even when the police show up on the scene. Um, that a a lack of a police report number will get you unable to um have your insurance reimburse you for damage um to your vehicle. Um, and so there there is a breakdown at that point as well, and particularly when we're looking at lower level offenses. If the police are not taking those reports or saying you need to come down to the station later to make a report, then that is dissuading our citizens from being able to use the systems that are already there for their benefit. Um, we also have problems with prosecution, that even when there is a case that is built, um that there are multiple charges, getting those prosecutions through is very difficult. Um, the police have have told me their frustrations with being able to um have their work followed up upon by a successful prosecution or even charges being filed, and that is a problem, right? And so what what this is doing as a municipal offense actually sends it to our city councillor instead of the circuit attorney's office um for charging. And so maybe this is one way of saying that we have we believe that there's more possibility of actually getting charged through the the city councillor's office. I don't know whether or not that's true. I'm not sure their record as far as um prosecuting municipal offenses of this type of a nature, if we are actually able to get the police out with a police report, nine-one-one to take it seriously, right? So it it is a full systemic, what is happening that all of these, we're, we have failures at many points in this system, right? Um, and how we try to figure out how to fix those issues, I think is really important. And maybe this is one tool to add on to say that this is a municipal offense. But if it's already an attempted larceny, then that should be enough to send out the police and to make a report based on that. It should be enough um for there to be charges filed if you've got multiple instances of it. And it may even be a higher charge if it is attempted larceny of multiple vehicles. That sounds like something to me that should be a more significant charge than even just a municipal offense here. So I don't, I don't believe that we need to create new offenses to get existing offenses taken seriously. Um, I think that that is, that is a breakdown. I think um jail time here still significantly bothers me. Um, jail is not, incarceration is not rehabilitation. Um, we're not helping folks when we incarcerate them. Um, we are removing them from potential jobs, from ability to pay bills. Um, and you know, what other obligations that they have, regardless of what they're doing, and and sure, those can be consequences of committing a crime. Um, but if incarceration were rehab Um but if incarceration were rehabilitation and we were actually helping people through that, we would be the safest country in the world, and we would be the safest state in the country, because our incarceration rate in Missouri is higher than any other state. Um is higher than the incarceration rate of the United States in general. So I I continue, like, I continue to be frustrated with the jail time on this. Um I would follow the Alderman from the first. If there was a reduction um of jail time or the removal of jail time altogether, I would be much more inclined to support this. Um it costs us more um to incarcerate people than to prevent um crimes from happening. We know that we need youth programming. We know that we need things for people to do um that we need, we need cure violence, we need interruption programs. Um all of those things, then, and some of that youth focused programming, we have the resources coming to our city that we can use to work on some of these programs. We have these ARPA funds um that can be used in to bolster the programs that we have and expand them. Um and I would encourage us to continue to remember that it costs more to prosecute and incarcerate than it does to prevent. Um and so again, trying, trying to use our resources wisely here. The other, the other question about racial profiling. I will speak as the representative of a ward that has significantly dropped in black population over the last ten years. Um we have had numerous instances of people calling the police on residents of our ward or of our neighborhood just walking down the street. Nextdoor as an app had to go and place specific parameters around how you report a crime so that we were not racially profiling, just because it was somebody that somebody didn't recognize. We have had residents report that they don't feel safe walking down the street, and that's not okay. I don't want my neighbors calling the police on their neighbor who is getting into the wrong car, right? That continues to further the division that we have in my ward. I'm speaking as the representative of my own ward. So that is, that is how I see this potentially playing out, and that that bothers me, that scares me. Um it also scares me the potential for people to take things into their own hands. There was a child with special needs who was shot and killed on a parking pad behind um this gentleman's house because the friends that he was with were breaking into a car. Um and in Missouri, the castle doctrine is is expansive, um and everyone has a gun, and these things are scary. We've had a resident um in southwest garden just this year get shot um while trying to interrupt a catalytic converter thief, right? These are, these are scary things, but I don't know. I I just don't see this municipal offense as solving the myriad of problems that we've identified today. These are problems. We need to do something about them, but this seems like such a miniscule piece of something with potentially significant harms to be done by jail time. Um and and we still don't have the resources in place to respond to calls, let alone get the dispatch correctly to identify them. So I I think that there, I would love um for the Public Safety Committee to be working on nine one one. Um like, if we can bring some nine one one folks in and figure out how they're being trained, what those conversations are like right now. I know that's something that the mayor's office is working on to um revamp nine one one and empower them and get some of that technology um improve there as well. But residents should not be met with, well, this isn't a problem when they call nine one one. If these are offenses that are already on the books, then they need to be met with respect, um and there needs to be a dispatch call made, and then the police decide whether or not they have resources for it. But that's not what's happening. Um and then, and then on down the line of the of the full spectrum of issues that we have, um I also want to plead with people to not leave their guns in cars. And I agree with the Alderman from the fifteenth that we have to do more to dissuade people from leaving guns in cars um at their homes and at events when they come into the city. Um this, this is a disaster um for our city. Missouri's gun laws and the more and more free that gun laws have gotten, the more violence and more death that has come to the city of St. Louis, and that is not okay. That is not okay for us. That is not okay for children. It is not okay for elderly residents. This is all not okay. And I, I just, this, this continues to be a piece um that I don't think that I can support, but I am here, I am committed to working on the rest of these issues. Um but I I think this problem is much bigger than this one this one small offense of lifting door handles. And if it's the info in the data that we're trying to get to, then we tell nine one one to prioritize these attempted like larceny calls. We we empower the systems that we have. We don't create new crimes. Um that's that would be my plea, is that we all work together on the full range of what's going wrong in the city. Um, thank you.
Alderman from the twenty second, you recognized for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um with the Alderman from the first ward, you muted.
All the one, yeah, all the one from the first will yield the question to the Alderman from twenty second. Think she's out right now, Alderman.
Oh, okay. Um with the um Alderman from the twelfth, you have the questions.
Alderman from the twelfth, we yield the questions to the Alderman from the twenty second. Thank the Alderman from the twelfth is no longer there.
Okay, with the Alderman from the eighth, would you?
All along from the eighth, we yield the question to the Alderman from the twenty second. Alderman from twenty second, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Alderman. I want to just kind of go back to um your concern about racial profiling. You mentioned that um in your neighborhood, I guess, people, the police are being called for people walking down the street. Can you elaborate more? I really didn't pick up how the racial profiling connected with what your story was.
Sure, sure. So um I will, I will speak specifically about my neighborhood. We um have lots of folks who pride our neighborhood on being diverse ward or diverse neighborhood, but the statistics have shown us, the census has shown us that that is no longer really the case, that we're predominantly white neighborhood, um and we've lost black population. Um in, in previous years, um there have been there have been calls to the police because a black person is seen in an alley um that they they think is doing something that they're not supposed to be doing, and it turns out that that person is a resident of that block and is merely walking down the alley to get to their dumpster or to visit someone or whatever it is. They're minding their own business. Um there, I mean, we had I mean, we had a, we've, we've had I would say probably numerous instances like that, um where where police have been called or posts have been put up on next door just because people don't recognize who it is that they're dealing with. I'm not saying that every report is racial profiling. I'm saying that there is, it is, it is true that there have been reports made, there have been calls made to police um on neighbors that did not realize that they were neighbors.
Um do you think any reports or calls have been made for uh non-black people that were walking down the street or in alleys in your neighborhood?
It's a good question. I, I think that there have been calls for non-black folks who have, I know, I know, I'm thinking of a couple of examples of folks who were um using drugs or dealing drugs um in their cars that were white or perceived to be white from the, from the color.
Sure. So if people see folks with potential suspicious activity, wouldn't it be appropriate to call the police if there was somebody in the alley or in the neighborhood acting a certain way, or maybe going up and down of people's doors or whatever? Wouldn't it be just commonplace to call the police, no matter if you're black or white?
Well, not necessarily, no, because I think the potential for harm there is significant. If it's someone who's minding their own business, but also is distrustful of the police and doesn't want to get into an interaction. And we've had numerous incidents in the city of St. Louis and across the country of police being called for seemingly innocent activity that have then escalated, and we've, we've led to tremendous harm.
Right. And and that's bad on the police, um because there are times where people have called on suspicious people, and they were actually breaking into people's homes. They were actually doing wrong. And sometimes, you know, it's a good call, and sometimes it's not a good call, because like I say, it could be a resident. But sometime, most of the time in my mind, I'd rather be safe than sorry. Um you mentioned something about people getting into the wrong car. I'm not sure, you know, how a person can accidentally get into the wrong car unless both cars look exactly alike, which has happened to me before. A truck looked just like mine. I thought it was mine. I'm like, well, the key won't work, you know? That happens from time to time, but guess what? You move right on to your, and get to the right car. It's not like you checking a whole, you're, you're putting the key in every car down the street, you know, or in the parking lot. Uh so I'm not sure, does that, you've actually seen that happen, where people just get into the wrong car?
Oh, I mean, I, I think your example is a good one, that sometimes you see a car that looks like yours, you're in a parking lot that looks like yours, or even I, there's there was one time that I can remember on my street that someone had a very similar car to mine, and I I kept clicking and clicking, you know, standing there and clicking and trying the door handle, like, why isn't this opening? Like, oh, this isn't my car, right? And I, I think what that comes down to, like, yes, there are mistakes, and there are mistaken calls. But where, whose safety are we taking into account, right? So is it the account of the, is it the person who we're calling the police on as well? Are we taking their safety into account? And it's different when it's someone who is clearly displaying criminal activity that is as broken windows is, you know, is down to their fifteenth car, right? That is something that the police should be taking seriously already. But when we're, I don't want people to panic because they see someone that they don't recognize, or they see someone with a mask on right now, because the masks, everyone's wearing a mask right now, and masks come in all different shapes and sizes. I don't want that panic to lead to a negative interaction with police that is gonna get someone hurt, and in a neighborhood like mine, that has happened, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep people safe on that aspect as well.
Okay, but what you just said uh was that you understand if somebody was, you know, going down the street pulling handles or, you know, that you would call the police on them.
I do, but I think that's, I think that's already a crime. I don't think that we need this in order for that to be a crime that the police respond to.
Okay, alrighty. And I'm gonna ask you this question as a lawyer. Um if you try criminal cases?
No, I have not tried criminal cases.
Okay, um I was hoping that the Alderman from the first would reappear because she had the concern, and you have the same concern about the jail time. And I'm just thinking that the majority of the ordinances, matter of fact, I can't think of eight ordinance that didn't have some type of fine and or jail time. I mean, it would, it's either or, and but I don't think this bill says it's mandatory that you have jail time, right?
I don't, I don't, that's not my reading of the bill either, but I do think that we are moving away from, particularly with nonviolent offenses, from including jail time when it's not necessary, because it's more expensive for us, and we haven't found that it's actually working to help rehabilitate folks who are committing offenses.
But but sometime, it's really expensive for the victims too.
Absolutely.
You have the same person that's going out there doing this time and time again. And so um judges do have discretion, but if a judge knew that this is third, fourth, fifth time that somebody's done this, and probably has stolen stuff time before, I think, wouldn't you think jail time would be appropriate? That they need to just go sit down somewhere?
Well, if you're talking about stealing stuff, then you're talking about state level offenses that have higher punishments and higher thresholds on those. So whatever.
Let me answer this. So trespassing. Someone keeps coming on your property, you're asking them to stay off your property. Right? And they continue to do it over and over again, and you file charges for trespassing. Now, maybe they didn't do any harm to you, but they're aggravating you, and you have a right to peaceful enjoyment of your own property. But I think trespassing would have jail time attached to it and a fine. Wouldn't you agree?
I would have to look at the, at the code to see what the exact difference.
Yeah, the chances are it does. I don't think that it's an anomaly that um this bill has jail time. I think thirty days is is really reasonable and was a great compromise.
Um if I could, I don't think it's an anomaly either, but I don't know that that's the smart, the ways that we are trying to smartly reform the criminal justice system to actually work um to lessen repeat offenses, to try to rehabilitate folks, to try to understand that just arresting cursory is not working for us. I think it would be smart of us to move away from, from what, the way that things have always been written.
Sure. And I think that if people are first time, or even a second time offender, maybe jail time is you know, not the right application, but there are people that are habitual thieves and just bad people. And I hear um you often and and some other colleagues, it just seems like jail time is not appropriate for anybody. And it just seems like there's this affection for criminals and not a lot of respect for victims. Um because, you know, victims deserve justice too. And, you know, I'm from the mindset, and I know everybody talks about bail reform and so on and so forth, but I talked to quite a few people that's you know, in that circle, they don't believe in bail, period. You know, that nobody should go to jail, that you should just go home until your court date. And to me, that's not fair to the victims. Um so and I, I, I definitely supportive of, you know, looking at public safety in a different way, looking at incarceration in a different way, but um I'm for consequences for people that wrong.
Sure, could I respond to that?
Sure.
So I, I think it's a, a miss misunderstanding, a miss um misconception of of my feelings and some of my other colleagues' feelings about crime and victims and people who are perpetrating crimes. I, I do not think that any of us are trying to um place people who are committing the crimes above the victims of crime. There should be restitution. There should be consequences when people are hurting other people. But there are other models of trying to reform and reconcile people to each other in ways that actually have a higher potential of making people whole, both victims and perpetrators, particularly when we're talking about these lower level offenses, right? We're talking about nonviolent breaking into cars, things like that. There, there are other methods of restitution of community reconciliation that do actually show promise over and above arrest and incarcerate. So I, I am not of a camp that says that everyone should go free. Um that's not, that is unrealistic in our society. Um and I think some of the folks who don't believe in bond, um that's, it's a nuanced position because there is there are people who do need to be held, but when you take away the payment of bail, then you're not allowing people who just have more money and are able to pay to be out otherwise, right? Like, so it's, it's about who is able to pay versus the crime itself and the severity of the crime. The severity of the crime and that person's situation should determine whether or not they are held pretrial, not their ability to pay. And that's where that bail conversation comes in.
Well, if you, if you can't afford bail, then don't do the crime. Okay, but I mean, uh there was another point uh I wanted to ask you about. It's just escaped me. Uh maybe I didn't need to ask it. Uh I want to thank you for yielding.
Of course.
And I want to say to my colleagues who have refused to yield to other aldermen during this public discourse, um I'm disappointed. Uh because when you can ask the sponsor of a bill questions, then you should be willing to accept questions from your colleagues. The purpose of us having this time is to have meaningful debate so that maybe we can make a bill better. And so oftentimes, I'm always curious as to why some of my white colleagues think that they know what's best for black people. And so when we hear that, and we want to challenge you on why you feel that way, but you refuse to communicate with us, that's very disappointing. And I would hope that my colleague from the twelfth ward would rethink that, and I think there was somebody else that failed to yield. Um because that's not right, and that's not fair, because then it's all about you. And it's not about the collective. So I just wanted to say that. And with that, Mr. President, I yield my time back.
Great, thank you. Uh Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make this quick. With the Alderman from the eighth, please.
Alderman from the eighth, will you, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the third? Alderman from the third, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh just real quick, um you, you mentioned the racial profile that happens in your neighborhood, and the reason this is very important, because we all have spoken about not we all, but some of us expressed our discontent with this bill based on the, the assumption that this could possibly create pipelines for racial discrimination, discrimination practices. So um, you know, from a ward that is, is uh, like you said, predominantly white, where you have some black people that have moved in, got some of the, once again, people have talked about how this could racially be uh, this could be utilized to be racially discriminatory. Um you have dealt with some of the practices that these older people are expressing could potentially be harmful. And if you have been uh, well, first I ask this, how long have you been an older person there in the eighth ward?
Sorry, um and I mean, it's, it's public record. I was elected in uh twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, alright, so for the last, uh, four to five years, uh, within those four to five years, you've experienced, uh, uh, last three to four years, you've experienced, uh, some of the racial profiling that you talked about, or was that prior to you becoming an alderwoman?
I think both.
Okay, so in your official position as an alderperson, seeing those instances happen, see that some of those were unjust, how did you deal with those situations? And, uh, dealing with your residents to ensure there was some type of education or progressive, uh, methods, uh, moving forward to where those racial discrimination practices didn't happen?
Sure, so part of that is, is being very careful and conscious about how we are interacting online with each other. That is one area that has been difficult, uh, for neighbors in our, in our ward. Um, I was elected on the heels of, um, significant, I guess, um, significant issues in particularly the Shaw neighborhood after the death of Van Deret Meyers, um, which, who was a, a black teenager who grew up in our neighborhood. Um, his grandmother lived there, was a, his family were longtime residents, um, and was killed by an off-duty police officer, right? And we can debate the terms around all of that that happened, but what came out of that, um, was a, a series of meetings over a course of years in the community about, um, and it was, it was black folks and white folks together, um, talking about how do we address situations within our own ward, how do we see each other as neighbors first, um, and not suspects first? Um, there's, there are incredible programs like, um, Touchy Topics Tuesdays is something that came out of that as well, as a longtime black resident um, of our neighborhood that specifically brings people together to have those hard conversations. Um, and trying, trying to help people understand that there, there's, there's more to being a good neighbor, being a, in a good neighborhood than just calling the police, right? It's, it's strengthening the block units, it's block captains, it's neighborhood associations, and getting folks to know each other so that they're not calling the police when they see their neighbor out next to their car or trying to get into the house or something like that.
So you're strengthening those block units and those different programs and organizations, exactly how has that, um, uh, what protocols have you utilized, um, to ensure that those type of practices are, are uh, kind of lessened in degree today? And those individuals who may have been racially profiling, maybe unaware of it, um, you know, how, how does that educational piece look within your neighborhood? Because if other people are saying that they don't want this to happen, if you have dealt with it and maybe had some remediation of the issue, it would make sense during this type of a discussion for us to find out exactly what's happening on the other side of town, and how it is that individuals who battled this um, have been successful.
Sure, I mean, I, just reiterating all of the things that I said, I'm not sure that I've got necessarily a rubric to say, hey, you know, these, these things have lessened over time, um, but it is, it's, it's continual engagement with the community and trying to under, like, get to know your neighbors, get to know when something is going wrong. Um, you know, it's, so, and I would say, you know, the, the Shaw neighborhood especially has been one of, of racial flux over the years. It used to be a predominantly white ward, and then it was a predominantly black neighborhood, and then it wasn't, now it's a predominantly white neighborhood again. It is, it is a ever-changing situation that we have there, and so, um, I do think that we have incredible residents who are engaged in trying to understand how to be good neighbors to each other. They are also frustrated by break-ins, they are frustrated by, um, burglaries, they're frustrated by checking your door handles and things like that. That, I'm not saying that we are exempt from the problems of the rest of the city, we absolutely are. Um, but I think folks are, are taking a beat before they make those phone calls to try to make sure that they truly know what's happening, um, before they bring, bring the police in. And I think that that is something that can be mirrored around the city as well.
In particular, how are they truly finding out what's happening before calling the police?
But I think it's, it's more than a government reaction to pick up the phone, it's to, it's to kind of stay back and observe.
Engage someone, how, how are they doing in particular? They see something that looks to be a crime in a commission, are they walking outside and saying, hey?
Oh, no, I would never, no, I would never advise, I would never advise a citizen to try to interrupt a crime in commission, and I think the police would absolutely back that up. That is, is a dangerous thing to do with our proliferation of guns. I would never advise that.
So you advise them to call the police, correct?
I would advise them to, to watch and see what's happening, and if they know what's happening, then yes, you call the police.
Understood, and how do they get to know their neighbors in particular? If that's what you're pushing, if that's what you've been telling them to do, we need to get to know our neighbors, which would seem like the more practical thing. Therefore, you're not racially profiling someone that lives two or three doors down and just moved in. How are you encouraging that behavior?
Sure, so it's, um, encouraging people to participate in the neighborhood associations, to become block captains, and for the block captains to engage with new folks that are moving in, um, and have, you know, national night out nights are really great for that, for people to have block parties and get together and, um, and it's, it makes it a much, well, it makes it a, a, a nice place to be, uh, when you, when you know your neighbors like that.
Understood, so, so would, you know, would you be amenable to say that, that your residents are taking that approach and getting to know each other more?
I think so. I think in, um, I mean, COVID is a little bit difficult, right? It's, we haven't been able to gather in person, and so it's been a difficult year and a half around that. But I, I do think that our, our neighborhood associations have been able to, to make good progress along that. That's, that is the goal of the neighborhood association, is to try to create a better community.
It should be safe to say that neighbors would recognize and know that there is a house up for sale on their block, and there could be new neighbors moving in.
Sure.
It'd be also safe to say that, you know, through these efforts that, that you have started and some of the residents have started, there has been more of a conscious effort, once again, to get to know each other. And possibly the neighbors within those neighborhoods that we are speaking about, that you represent, have a better idea of who lives in their neighborhoods at this point. Seeing as this has been something that you've worked on and been progressive on for the last three years of, uh, your tenure here.
I mean, I don't, I, I am not going to take credit for it. I think, um, there's a lot that I've been involved in, but I, I, these are, these are things that, to the credit of the Shaw neighborhood, there are a lot of community-driven actions that happen without my needing to start them. So I do think that it has helped. I, I would need to speak to some of our black residents and see if they truly feel safe, um, walking down the street, and there, it is, it is unfortunate that we hear those testimonies.
Do they feel safe?
I'm sorry, what?
I said, so you have not spoken to your black residents and asked them, do they feel safe for these, these practices that have, that is supposedly changed? That I look at some racially charged incidents?
So I, I follow along as these conversations happen. Um, I, I haven't knocked on folks' doors and asked people specifically or, or things like that. It is, it's a general observing of how people are interacting with each other online, and when they're telling their stories, and some of them I have followed up on to see what we could be doing differently and that type of thing, but, um.
Are you proposing that that's something that you're going to do, is what it sound like? You said you, you haven't followed up with your black residents to see if they feel safe.
I, okay, so I feel like, I feel like you're being a bit disingenuous, um, Alderman, and I, I'm trying to.
Point of, just so you can understand my question, if we're talking about racially profiling and you're dealing with those particular things, and you have individuals who are living in communities that are predominantly black, other ones that are predominantly white, and people are saying that this is a tool that could be utilized discriminatorily. You know, what, what I'm basically saying is, if there is real efforts that have taken place that have shown to decrease some of this type of behavior, then we all need to know about it. Therefore, we can utilize these things as a tool also at the same time while also implementing other tools. Right? If your residents have taken a, a proactive approach to get out and get to know their neighbors, and we see that there's a reduction in the amount of people that they say, hey, he doesn't live here, he doesn't look like he lives here. And, you know, those things have been something that we can statistically see from the calls that were made three or four years ago, or, you know, maybe prior to you being an alderperson and other, you know, other community members that worked on that, up into this point where we can say that, hey, talking to each other, these particular things have made a difference, then maybe we couple that with our efforts in saying, hey, uh, people need to get out there and know their neighbors, and at the same time, uh, like you said, uh, do what's necessary to ensure before you call the police that that isn't one of your neighbors or that isn't a resident down the street. Whatever protocols that have taken place up into this point where we've had this conversation that may work, that's something that we all need to know about, therefore we aren't having discussions that are in the dark and just saying we can't do anything particularly right now, uh, based on things that have happened in the past. You know, we're moving progressively forward, and you've had some progress with some of the things that we're saying will pull us back. And, you know, it's, it's important for us to, to be able to speak to those things and, and have some, uh, comments toward the general public and I'm sorry, could you, you know, can have some, uh, can look and see that these are practices that are happening and working in other places. Therefore, you shouldn't be afraid of the, the discriminatory practices that could come if you do X, Y, Z. So I'm definitely not trying to be ingenuous, but I want to be clear. Um, when people are talking about racially profiling, I am black, you know, and every word that's come out your mouth as far as a racial profile, it wasn't about Asians or immigrants, it's about black folks. So I'm a black man. I don't want to be racially profiled if I come to the eighth ward. And if I need to do something to ensure, if I'm walking down the street or going to enjoy one of your parks, uh, to ensure that I'm not racially profiled, then I want to know what that looks like. I want to be able to, you know, is it smiling, do I wave at a neighbor, do I, should I know who the block captain is so I can name drop? Therefore, individuals know, I know somebody through the neighborhood. Particularly, what is it, you know, that, that makes that neighborhood tick and talk, you know?
Sure, well, so I think, I, I mean, there's the kind of a, a, a lot there, and I would say for me, the roots of, of public safety is in community, is understanding our neighbors, is trying to figure things out. And listen, people that come into our communities and commit crime, you can't, I'm not trying to be pie in the sky here, like, there are people who come from outside that are committing crime, there are people who are inside the community that are also committing crime. But the root of safety is in communities and neighborhoods. So I would say that we, we as the eighth ward have worked really hard to try to get folks to understand their neighbors, to get to know each other, to know when are good times to call the police and when, you know, there may be a different type of interaction, or could we work more on prevention so that we're not in this situation where we need to call police in general? Um, I, I don't know that I can quantify the results of that. I will say, I, I think, um, I do get reports from people sometimes when they say that they've had a negative interaction with the police or with their neighbors, and I do try to address those things as they come up. Um, they have been much fewer and much more infrequent, um, and I don't know if that's just that, you know, people aren't, aren't calling me or that they aren't happening. I can't, I can't speak with any definiteness that, that that is actually happening. But trying to, I, I can't tell you what's going to make you safe when you come to the eighth ward. I would hope that you are safe when you come to the eighth ward. I hope that you are safe when you were walking around the whole of our city. I mean, I don't think that you should need some sort of a special greeting or some type of sign to say, hey, I'm a safe person, um, but it is.
To say most of your neighbors are logically thinking, even when they make phone calls that may not necessarily, I've made phone calls and was wrong before on, on black people, white people.
Sure.
You know, sometimes you see things and it's not exactly what you thought you saw, that's why you have to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But that's also, that's also where, you know, trust in the police department comes in, and trust that, um, you know, and training in neighborhood policing, so that the police who are in our neighborhoods know who our residents are as well, and that there's a trust built back within that community. That, that goes both ways, right? So I want to know that when I'm calling the police about someone trying fifteen-door handles, that it's not gonna end up in someone getting shot dead, right? Like, that is a, is a negative interaction for everyone. So how do we work to build the trust on both sides that we're being careful about how we're calling in law enforcement, but also that law enforcement is an entity that we can trust to handle people, um, in a way that is both safe for them and safe for the person that they're interacting with?
Understood, and from what it sounds like, it sounds like you've done some of that, you know, so just to, to, I guess, to my point is, it would seem like your neighborhoods are cognizant of who lives in their neighborhood. You know, so I'm saying, it seems like your neighbors are cognizant of who's live, who's living amongst them, who it is that they see regularly. If you have a predominantly white neighborhood, then most of those residents, I would think, can identify the black families that live in the neighborhood because they are somewhat of a minority there. So, you know, it seems if your residents are working hard on learning who each other are, who lives where, uh, and not being discriminatory in nature, but just getting to know each other on a, on a, on a more neighborly front, then they would be able to discern when they see someone walking down the street that doesn't fit the description of a neighbor that lives there, be they white, black, um, uh, you know, uh, an immigrant, whoever it is, of course, you're never gonna be one hundred percent all the way, uh, correct with every single resident. None of them, you know, know that, that's just not the way the world works, there'll always be some yin and yang to it all. But for the most part, it would seem that if your residents are working towards having that type of, uh, uh, you know, neighborhoods where everybody is getting to know each other, then most of the people there, especially individuals who are involved in neighborhood meetings, uh, uh, block, block unit meetings, block unit meetings, I'm sorry. Um, sorry about that, had a call coming in, but it would seem like they would be, uh, individuals who also would look out the window and, and say something to a neighbor down the street or another resident around the corner. Hey, I see something that looks suspicious, do you know who this person is? Let me send you a photo, send you a video, oh, that's such and such kid, he's cool, you know? Um, I, I saw him try my door handle, well, let me call his mom, you know? Those, those things sound like, um, you know, something that we all would, we, 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 we want for all of our neighborhoods, for individuals in the neighborhoods and folks who live there to be collectively together. Um, when there's an incident happening, or at bare minimum, getting to know each other before incidents take place. Um, so once again, I appreciate that. I just wanted to, to, to get that information, it's very important. Um, you know, when we're having these racially charged discussions to, to understand what's happening on different sides of town, how things are being worked out, why people think the way that it is that they do, and what we can do moving forward to ensure when we get to places like this, and we have bills like this, that there is some type of a understanding on what we could do to get to an amicable solution. So it's another question, exactly how many break-ins do, well, not exactly, but can you give me a rough idea of how many car, uh, attempted thefts you have within the eighth ward?
I, I can't speak to that at the moment. I tried to pull up some of the crime statistics while we were in this conversation, and, um, the new format has me a bit baffled, um, of trying to put together what, what we're at right now. I know that we are, um, we are reduced in, um, person-to-person crime. I think we, we have had less, um, less carjackings, less, um, person crime than we've had break-ins and catalytic converter thefts and car thefts, um, this year. I think those numbers are at least even if not increased since last year.
Understood, okay, well, I appreciate it. Thank you for, uh, for answering my questions there.
Absolutely, and Alderman, I, I also, if I could just add, I think trying to compare the eighth ward to the third ward is, is very different, right? We, we represent very different wards with different levels of crime and different types of crime that are happening. And so I would never say that, that our solutions are going to be exactly the same. Um, I'm just trying to accurately represent my residents, and so I, I hope that you understand that, that I would never speak for, um, for the differences in, in what we're dealing with, because I know they're drastically different.
I do, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Uh, so I just want to say once again, we got black and white people stealing stuff throughout the city, ain't just poor black people, right? I mean, I gotta put that out there, all of us ain't thieves. There's plenty of poor people out here and that are, that are black, that are going to school every day, that are coming home, that are working very, very hard to bring home what's necessary to keep the lights on and the water on. Everybody that's stealing and bringing these cars ain't black, so this just ain't like a black thing. White folks out here stealing catalytic converters and trying to steal whole cars. So, you know, let's be very, very clear, it just ain't about minorities. Um, you know, I just, once again, want to throw that out there, I appreciate it, Mr. President, but like I said, I didn't, I didn't hear anybody else that was particularly against it, but I wanted to cross-examine or question anybody who, uh, is, is talking about the racial, uh, profiling that could exist within this bill. Um, when, once again, my constituents are begging for us to do something about the crime that exists, and a lot of these things are happening in and out of these vehicles, and that's, that is just the simple truth of it. Uh, so once again, I appreciate it, we're better, I yield, I know we all been talking for a very long time, it's been a pretty long meeting. Uh, thank you for your time, and thank you, Alderwoman Rice.
All right, thank you, um, Alderman, Ald- Alderman from the sixteenth. Um, you recognize on the motion to perfect, uh, the floor substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I renew my motion.
No, I, you, I need you to now move to perfect the actual floor substitute.
Oh, sorry. Mr. President, I move to, uh, perfect floor substit-, or board bill sixty-one floor substitute.
It's been moved by Alderman, uh, seconded by Alderman of the tenth and, uh, someone else, number of other people. We moved and seconded that we perfect board bill number, uh, sixty-one floor substitute, double four substitute, ma'am clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Nigracia?
No.
Alderman Calder? Alderwoman Rice?
No.
Alderman Gunther? Alderman Ballmer? I'm sorry, Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Morn?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
No.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green? Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel? Alderman Todd?
Oh.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Collins Mohammed? Alderman Boyd?
Absolutely, aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Kong? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
You didn't, she didn't hear you, Alderwoman. Um, still can't hear you. Oh, there you go. There you go.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro?
No.
President Reed?
Aye. And, uh, Madam Clerk, Alderwoman from the fifteenth, she's trying to get her mic working. Um, and Alderwoman from the fifteenth, if you can hear me, I know you put in a text message box that you would be a no, but we would actually have to have you say that audibly to be able to count it. Uh, please proceed, uh, Madam Clerk.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Calder? Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green? Alderwoman Peel? Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Collins Mohammed?
Alderman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Kong?
Looks like Alderman from the seventh is back. He's connected.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Calder?
You broke up, Alderman. Can you, one more time?
Aye.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. You got two thumbs up. Yes.
Thank you. Alderwoman Green? Alderwoman Peel? Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Kong? Nineteen aye votes and five no votes.
My vote is staying in motion of Alderman from the sixteenth and perfected board bill number sixty-one for substitute.
That is exempt of, of board bills for perfection.
Dispense with line item seventeen, third reading consent.
Boarding forty sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Todd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Boyd and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. And ordinance amended sections two and three of ordinance number seven zero three 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 and containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the first, you recognize on the third reading final passes of board bill number forty.
Mr. President, members of the board, I've moved to third reading final pass board bill forty.
The move, move by Alderman from the first. Twenty-third, the tenth and a couple others. Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, I am a, you guys know me to be a very straight forth, forth person. Um, I am shocked by, um, the, uh, correspondence I got in the last day and a half from Nancy Cross in the mayor's office. Because it makes appearance of that I'm, I'm not trying to work with board bill, with her in board bill forty. I absolutely have been trying to work with everybody. Um, just to give you a little timeline, uh, board bill forty, which is about the, uh, uh, tech traffic calming and speed humps. Is that I actually wrote a timeline because I just could not believe it. And I don't like when people try to put misinformation out. I started working on this board bill in nine, two thousand nineteen. Um, and, and, um, several of the people are on my streets committee now. They were on the streets committee stand, the Alderman from the twenty-second was the president, I mean, the chair. He had some problems with the traffic calming. I rewrote it. I brought it back. And the twenty twenty, uh, one year, there was some more people that wanted changes. I killed it. I came back this year. Um, and early-
On my hook reel now. I missed the vote. All of it.
Okay, um, I, uh, uh, in early April twenty twenty-one, I became, we had a caucus meeting. I became the chair of committee, uh, streets committee. I, in fact, I didn't become the chair. I chose it. Uh, April twentieth, I became the chair. Uh, during that time, um, I heard from Nancy Cross on May thirteenth or fourteenth because they needed some help about the law for the charter, which the mayor's office calls me often, or the mayor herself. I responded and helped them. Um, on May twenty-seventh, I introduced board bill forty regarding the traffic calming. On the same day, it was referred to the street committee. Sometimes after it was introduced, I got a call from Nancy Cross saying that she wants to bring me up to date on the traffic calming, the street humps. I asked her how long has she been working on the, uh, traffic calming concerns? And cause she, and how could she bring me up to speed since I've been working on this issue for three years? After speaking with her, I knew that she didn't know what she's talking about. She had no idea. And Nancy and I have been longtime allies, but when you don't know, you just don't know what you're talking about. She didn't know what she was talking about. And so, uh, she brought up at that time that the, and since we already know now, I can disclose this because I was helping the mayor's office and some things I was helping him, I was keeping their confidence. She brought up that they were going to get a new black female street director, um, and some possible concerns with the mayor's office. I told her, I said, no problem. I'll just call the mayor. She and I called each other a lot of times in the morning at seven o'clock. Said, oh, no, it's not the mayor. It's me that has this issue. Um, then she talked about a citywide track study or traffic, uh, some kind of traffic study. On June twelve, fifteenth, I'm sorry, I had a streets committee hearing. And I held my meeting, I held my building committee, even though I had the votes to pass it out. That was on June tw- fifteenth. I have had another streets committee hearing on June twenty-second. And board bill forty was passed out with a due pass recommendation. Not one person from the mayor's office showed up to say they had any problem with the bill. The mayor didn't call me. Uh, nobody said anything to me, especially not Nancy Cross. Um, on June twenty-fifth, the bill, uh, uh, was second read. And the next me, week, we had a meeting. Again, I put the bill on a formal calendar, even though I had the votes to pass it out of the board. I had not heard from Nancy Cross. I waited for the alleged traffic study. There was none. To this day, there's no traffic study that she talked about. Um, on about August twenty-sixth, I was contacted by members of the mayor's staff who helped me to, asked me to help them with the qualifications of the street director. Now, all this stuff, if you want me to, I can email it to all of you all. You know, I keep receipts. I'm very good at keeping receipts. That's what young people say. So I helped them work on what the, uh, qualifications were and how they could get this person in. And I still didn't hear from Nancy Cross. Nor was I even invited to meet the person or sit on the committee that had any discussion with her. Now all of a sudden, uh, Nancy is just in a hurry. You just, I just need to talk to you. Meanwhile, I don't have a neighborhood improvement specialist because back in, uh, May, June, I can't even remember when, the one that I was sharing with the eighteenth ward was hired so that in June or July, he became the mayor's assistant. But before that, I hadn't had one in a, over a year. So my committee man and I, we go out and do the work because we don't have, uh, a neighborhood improvement specialist. I turned in all this stuff to different, uh, departments. Each and everything, but he's never, ever responded to anything I've said to her.
Alderman from third, yeah, you-
Can someone do?
All right. Please, please proceed.
Okay. She, she never responded to anything. Um, and this is her duty as director of operations. She should have been responding and, and saying, oh, I'm so sorry. Because when they hired my neighborhood improvement specialist away, they promised me another one immediately. Now, that didn't happen. And then they tried to give me a one of somebody else's neighborhood improvement specialist from North St. Louis. And I said, absolutely not. That is not how you do it. I don't roll like that. No. You don't take the resources from somebody else. You need to hire somebody. In the meantime, I'm busy. I'm still not hearing from Nancy. I'm still not hearing that there's going to be a traffic study, nothing, no invitations, dead silence. In fact, what I heard and what they need to understand is that I've been here way before they have. You don't know who I know that works up in your office that's been there for a long time. So I heard a little ying, ying, ying from Nancy about her whining, okay? Um, you are my friend, but I don't care who you are. Don't whine about me doing my job when you're not doing yours, okay? Cause I will do my job. Um, Saturday, I got some kind of a note and a call from Nancy Cross talking about she had, uh, Mrs. Wilson, who is going to be the new director of, uh, uh, streets, had accepted an offer to become the director of streets. And all of a sudden, from Saturday to, uh, now I got a couple more emails. Oh, I need to meet with you. I need you to meet her. She's a black female. I don't care if she's a black female. I, I wake up with a black female every single day of my life, okay? I hate when white people say that to me. It gets on my last damn nerves. I've made this point perfectly clear. The, Clarence Harmon, I mean, I'm sorry, Clarence, not Harmon, but Clarence Thomas is a black male. If you bring me him, I still don't agree with him politically, okay? So that doesn't mean anything. And if you talk to most black people, when you start talking about that one black friend that you have, oh my God, I thought Nancy had more sense than this. Really, I did. And so I don't want to meet with you now. You, I wanted to be participatory. You, all these people talk about participate, participate. But you were sucking my brains every other day, calling me about stuff. But you never invited me to sit down and to, after you had picked the person, now you want me to meet him. Because now you've picked them and now, oh, put your blessing on them. No, I'm not. I don't care if, one of the things I always tell people, I don't even like to cut the cake. I want to be in the kitchen when the ingredients are being put in because you might put poison in that cake. One of my favorite commercials is there is a little commercial where about the mice and, uh, whatever, decon. And the ladies, the, the mice are saying, oh, they think I made this, but I didn't. Decon did. That's exactly what can happen when you let somebody make a cake and you don't know what's in that cake, okay? So, uh, you all know I'm like that with all of you. I ask questions. And if you need questions answered, uh, the Alderman from the twenty-second will tell you this. For years, he was trying to get answers from the former treasurer's office, which became the mayor. I was one of her most ardent defenders. You know, I stood up on this floor and criticized many of you all about, uh, doing things to her and said, I'm with her. And I've been with her for a long time. But the new, uh, treasurer did not give the Alderman from the twenty-second ward the things that he needed. I wrote up a very specific request, citing, citing the charter and what needs to be had. And Alderman from the twenty-second ward got his information that he had been trying for a long time. He actually then became the second, uh, when I sponsored the board bill, he became the second on that board bill. And we passed out the treasurer's budget this time, not cutting any money out of it. And, uh, nobody even, uh, said they had any problems with it. We as Alderpeople have a right to, uh, pass legislation. We have a right to ask for questions. And so if you have questions with me and you want to meet with me and you do it the right way, I'm the person. I will meet with you. We can have conversations. You can challenge me. But what you cannot do is put out misinformation like you've been trying to get with me and have meetings with me when you have not. You have been trying to stay far away from me because you are not doing your duty as the director of operations. And I don't appreciate it. And you ought to be ashamed of yourself. I am not ashamed, but I'm not scared to debate anybody on anything and will, I'm welcome to debate. But this board bill that, uh, we have been working on for many years is one that, uh, I have given them more than an opportunity to have conversations with me and also to come to my committee, because even if I don't agree with you, if you come to the committee that I chair, I let you bring as many people as possible and we have conversation. There's nobody here can say, oh, Sharon Tyus wouldn't let me speak before her committee. And the mayor's office didn't show up and Nancy Cross didn't show up. She thinks that she can just call me and say I have a black person who's going to be the new chair of streets. And you don't tell me any reason why my board bill is a problem. You tell me, I want to have a study. I, go ahead and have a study. Like I said, I put my board bill on the informal calendar for almost two months, waiting for that study to start. Had she done anything toward doing a study, maybe you could have come and talked to me. But you did absolutely nothing. Where's that study you were going to do? And then you told me it wasn't the mayor. That was you. I don't care about, I didn't get Nancy Cross elected. I didn't work hard to get Nancy Cross elected. I worked hard to get Tishard Jones elected. So if you tell me it's not the mayor, then I don't care what you think because that's what happens with people who get close to people of power. What they do is they try to be the gatekeepers, uh, and then put, and sometimes they try to institute their agenda versus the agenda that is the mayor's. If the mayor has any questions with, for me, or she had any problems, she has my phone number, just like you guys do. And she has used it many times and many occasions. Board bill forty is a simple thing. Board bill forty allows us as Alderpeople to introduce a ordinance to get, um, um, uh, speed humps, uh, put in your ward. And I went through a re, a whole host of reasons why, uh, previously we didn't get speed humps. We didn't get speed humps because you had to go through the director who sometimes the administration, since they appoint the director, can put pressure on the directors. And so people who had put up their monies and, and sponsored, uh, speed humps, been waiting for years, not only for speed humps, for other things. That's ridiculous to me. Uh, uh, thanks to the Alderman from the twenty-second ward, I went to a meeting with the board of BPS president and also the current director, uh, Jamie Wilson, street director. We talked all about potential things that was wrong with, with my bill or what could be tweaked or what should be improved. I met with Alderpeople. I incorporated all the things that people said. And, uh, the people, uh, who are in charge of the city at the time, the director supported it. Um, all, other Alderpeople wanted certain things, like they wanted to be able to have a traffic study. That's in there. Other Alderpeople wanted, um, not to pay for the traffic study. That's in there. But what it does do is let us as Alderpeople, um, introduce measures about when and where we want speed humps. Now, there are some people says, well, all the squeaky wheel will get, what makes the most noise gets the, uh, uh, attention. Hmm. The people who said that to me, really, I laughed at that. Those are the people get out in the streets and, uh, they march and they make, bring attention to stuff and say that those things should be changed. And I agree with them. I protect their freedom. But don't get mad at the people in my community where we put out a petition, people signed it, and then they want speed humps. They live on the streets. Currently, we have no traffic enforcement from the police. It is dangerous. It is, uh, uh, a thing that you are scared to cross the street. I had three black people get killed on Union between Martin Luther King and, um, what is that? Natural Bridge, uh, a couple of weeks ago. I've had a black child get killed up there. Um, if you look in your, um, Google Docs, I posted a picture of one of the streets while they were putting my speed humps in last August. I just want you to see how they were knocking people's cars up into, uh, the front yards. They were hitting people's, uh, windows, uh, the mirrors. They were doing damage to people, hitting, running by, hitting people because they were flying down the streets. I have invested a substantial amount of money where people want speed humps. Now, one of them, have I put any place that people did not sign a petition? We had a, more than a majority that wanted them. When I tell you those speed humps have worked so well that, uh, and I can share with you all, all the letters I got saying, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. In my conversation with Ms. Cross, she said, well, you have speed humps on all the residential streets and that doesn't look good. I don't care if Nancy Cross thinks it looks good or not. The people who live on the street want the speed humps because it slows the traffic down. And I didn't put one or two. I spent the money so that you cannot speed on my residential streets. You cannot still put speed humps on major streets like King's Highway, uh, Union, um, Natural Bridge, West Florissant, where we need to have somebody literally, we need a speed hump every other street on that, on a West Florissant because they drive so, uh, fast. So there are street, streets you cannot address that, uh, issue. You gotta have to have some police. We don't have them right now. So there are street, streets you cannot address that uh issue. You gotta have to have some police. We don't have them right now. The same thing goes with um you still gotta go through the Street Director. You gotta get, make recommendations. Right now, the Street Director, because I had a board bill that was sitting up here, changed their recommendations and started letting people um get speed humps. We didn't have this board bill passed, but he changed recommendations. And he actually sent us a email um a week or so, two weeks ago, saying, everybody who wants to be in this last round of uh speed humps, which will start in October, turn in your um request and we're going to get that done. That was how we envisioned. I, I was here when we passed Ward Capital and all that thing, all those things. That's how we envisioned it would happen. When the Alderman from the ward wanted to pay for things in their ward, they could put it in. And we used to get it done in a year or two years, not five and six and seven years. Um, I think that's ridiculous that uh people try to argue, oh, well, we need a, a traffic study. Okay? And then we're going to holistically address this um this problem. The reason about that, that's a problem is because there are already people in many parts of this city who there's something called uh, uh, there's a book where you protect your neighborhoods, a defensible space is the name of the book. And so many years ago, many of us, including me, started closing off streets. And I have a lot of my streets closed, and I did not put speed humps on the streets that are closed, but I did put them on the streets uh that we did not close. Um, but um I did request a list from the city about private streets. I requested a list from the city about which streets are already closed. And then I wanted to find out from the mayor's office, so when you finally do this speed study in two or three or five years, are we going to open up all the streets that are already closed? And also this thing about speed humps, they're not permanent. The Alderman from the twenty uh third has already, I think, had one or two taken up. You also can put them in uh alleys where people have already been doing it. So, I, I don't even understand what this controversy is about, except for I just want to have my way. And if I bring you a black woman and say, there's this black woman that you're somehow supposed to yield, she never, she may be an engineer. Does she know the city better than me? Does she live in North St. Louis where I live? There are, I don't, there are not. I don't believe there's one uh Northside Alder person that's opposed to this. In fact, when I put it on the uh informal calendar, um, they encouraged me to get it off. Um, in fact, I think I had every black Alderman um Alderman Field left, but uh she also was supportive, supporting this board bill. I have several white Aldermen. This is not a white or black issue. And to tell me, I have to wait until you get around to doing what you said you were going to do. If I give you two months and you haven't done anything, you're just wanting to slow things down and not have things happen. Not that you're trying to do anything. And you ought to be ashamed of yourself that you would try to send out uh uh emails to the Alderman like, well, you're not answering me now. Try answering those twenty emails I sent you that you did not respond to me about, which uh showed that you weren't doing the things you were supposed to do because you were not getting services in my ward. So I was out being my own neighborhood improvement specialist, but yet I still had time to do some other things, okay? And one of them is I'm pushing this board bill. Now, here's what I can tell you. If the mayor doesn't want to, if she doesn't like this bill, she can veto it. Then I will tell my people, the mayor vetoed the bill that you all wanted, okay? But I'm not backing down. I'm not, not doing it. I did not meet with Nancy Cross. Nancy Cross ignored me and didn't do what she was supposed to do until the last moment. And then she used this, I got a black girl. That will turn me off faster than anything. Again, I wake up every day with a black girl. Black girl magic every single day. Sixty-five years. So, you gotta tell me something more. I waited for them to send me some stuff and say, this is what's wrong with the bill. Nothing. Um, come meet with this new person because I knew the person's name since August, because I got emails here from the, I knew the person who they were going to hire since August twenty-six. I didn't break confidence because that's who I am. If you tell me something, I'll keep confidence. I won't keep confidence if you try to make me out a liar or somebody that's not meeting with you. Then I'll tell everything and I'll tell more unless if I, if I don't receive a, a apology from Nancy Cross, then it's going to be even worse of what I'm going to do because I did not, not meet with her. And I don't, in, any of you all who've called me and wanted me to ask questions, I always answer the questions to the best of my ability, even if it doesn't go along with what I believe. If the president asks me something that's in his favor, and I think it is, I will say that, even if I don't agree with what he's doing. So I just am very um offended by Nancy Cross in the mayor's office. You have really damaged our working relationship. You can't make me do things by lying, by inference or omission or commission. What you can do is do your job. And um if you got uh specific problems with the bill, bring it up to me. The, what she said is that maybe she wants to do some other things. Okay. She can. When she gets here, she can, we'll meet and talk. And if there's some things that need to be changed, I'm not unreasonable. We can change those things. That's what you do with legislation. But right now, and I'm going to agree with the Alderman from the twenty-third ward, I saw the mayor downtown addressing that issue downtown and special police officers. Which I was wondering, hmm, where those special police officers going to come? Because we are not getting any, I didn't get any special police officers uh with the three people got killed on my street. And I know the Alderman from the twenty-first and the uh third event addressing Natural Bridge where lots of people got killed. That was before the mayor. But um if you want to have a conversation and you want me to be included, include me. If you think so much of my brain that you're calling me, how do you do this, how you do that, and I give it to you a mo- immediately, then think enough of me that when you're making choices, include me and stuff. I was very unhappy with the mayor when she had a group of people who didn't have any experience except for just ideas uh that are going to make the decision about how we spend our money that we got in here. And none of them were in, from North St. Louis, and none of them, well, were from North of Page. So I get very irritated about that. I'm irritated when white mayors do it. I'm irritated when black mayors do it. So when you send your white uh uh people who work for you to talk about a black woman, that doesn't mean anything to me. Please talk about issues. I do want, let me say this. I did bring it to the mayor's office. In my thirty years at the board, I had never seen anybody black at the streets department. So I am in support of that because I think that, and I told this to Jamie Wilson, I did not talk behind his back. I had a conversation with him and said, Jamie, when you appeared before my committee, you had all white men. I said, the only person you've had is Deanna Vanaker, who, who left and went out to the county. That's not inclusion. And two, twenty twenty-one, that's not okay with me. I didn't do it behind his back. I had a straightforward conversation. And I did then recommend to the mayor that they look for somebody. But just because you get them, that don't mean the world stops. If my child is hungry and they need food today, I'm not going to wait for ten days or fifteen days or thirty days for you to feed the child. Especially when you're showing me that you can do immediate things downtown. So this is the only thing I can do. I can't get the police. I've been talking about the lack of policing. Once we went into the fifth district, we fell off the face of the earth in North St. Louis. Um, the sixth district has no business being that size, and we have been promised that we were going to go to at least the seven districts, which we haven't. So the only thing I can do as an Alder person right now is spend up all my ward capital, which I would love to be spending someplace else, to put in um a speed humps um that have slowed the people down. I was made the offer and I told you last time, well, you can get whatever you want. This isn't even about me because most of my speed humps are in. This is about everybody having the equal access to speed humps that want them. Um, and it doesn't stop anything that's already in the uh piper, on the lines. It doesn't stop what you're going to do. It was supported by the Board of B, BPS and the then Street Director. If the new one comes in and she can give me a reason why this should be changed, and it has to be a, 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 a rational reason, not just because I'm, I'm a black girl and I showed up here, because that is not a good reason. Um, I would be open to the uh meeting with her and making changes. Um, but right now, this is the best that I have. I am looking um to third read and finally pass it, pass it. And, and so I just didn't want you to think that I was ignoring Nancy Cross. Um, and if you need me to, I will send you when she first contacted me. And I will show you my phone records because I do keep receipts. And so you have not been trying to reach with me, reach me. You have not been trying to meet with me until the last moment, and you have not started this study that you told me we're going to do. So I cannot wait forever for the mayor's office to get their uh action into place, uh their plan into place. Um, I've been here thirty years. We got enough downtown plans. I could probably stand on it and be ten feet tall. So uh the plan doesn't mean anything anyway. This was the best that I could find, and I tried to deal and work with as many Alder people who had opinions and, and, and concerns as I could. I would have worked with the administration if they had sent somebody who was capable of doing what they said they were going to do. They did not. And don't ever, ever again try to act like I'm ignoring you because then I will ignore you. And then you won't have to act because I will ignore you. Um, Mr. President, um again, I'd renew my motion and ask for third reading, final passage of Board Bill forty.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yeah, just, I'll be very quick because I know the meeting's going on and on and on. But I absolutely agree with the Alderman from the first. I have been trying, not trying, I've been very courteous on a GL oversight bill. And it seems to me that things get pushed and pushed and pushed. The total disrespect for this Board of Aldermen. If you haven't seen it, you're not looking. They hold press conferences. When I ask them to show up in the public safety meeting, I get answers that, well, we can give you about an hour, maybe about two or three weeks from now. Yet when we say, okay, we'll just have other people at the meeting, they show up. No, they, I, and I, I, I don't only support this bill because, yeah, I support it because it's the right thing to do. But I did want to also voice the same thing that the Alderman from the first is voicing is the total disrespect. And as long as we just keep bowing down and letting them disrespect us and we do what they ask and they veto our stuff, then we're going to get a lot of the same. We need to pass this out today. One, because it's the right bill. And two, we need to quit bowing down to the uh, you know, uh, uh, whatever. If they want to veto it, then veto it. It's a very popular bill. I know that they dumped it now. They said, oh, Joe, you can have all your speed homes now. Uh, it'll be two hundred ninety thousand dollars. Because they haven't been letting us do them. Now they put it out and people are going, oh, good. Well, Joe, so can I be first? No. I'm tired of being the fall guy for these, not only just this administration, but I seen this even in the last one. This, this total, it started and has gotten so much worse. The total disrespect for this Board of Aldermen. And as long as everybody wants to just keep being disrespected, then that's fine. But I, I, I will be moving on also with my board bill on the, on the jail. And uh, you know, I, I encourage everybody to support this bill because it's the right thing to do, not just because I'm, I'm aggravated. And because the uh uh Chairwoman of, of Streets, you know, first Ward Chairwoman is also bad, but it's also the right thing to do. But I will cut it at that because just made you know, go to midnight otherwise. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alder Woman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as, as we discussed last week, I completely agree that speeding is an incredibly dangerous situation across the entire city and it deserves urgent um attention and action. And I agree that the current speed hump process has been very flawed, at least for the last four years that I've, I've been in office. So um you know, I, I don't doubt that at all. However, I feel as a legislator, my job is to help make government run better, not necessarily to usurp the functions of government. Um, you know, I support a data-driven approach here based on good planning principles. I understand we are not there yet, but I'm not ready to, to give up. Um, I don't think anybody on, on this board has been trained in traffic engineering. I know we have some folks with some urban planning background. Um, but I, I think good government means that we turn these decisions over to the experts and we use a data-driven approach. And I believe my job is if, if things are not working at a city department, then I want to figure out how I can build capacity. How can I get the resources that we need? I don't believe that I should be the one therefore making the decision. Um, you know, traffic flow and traffic planning should be left up to, to the experts. And if the concern that we heard last week was that, um, you know, at times these decisions have been politicized or it's left up to the discretion of um certain individuals, uh I don't know that adding twenty-nine more people to that discussion is, is the right way to go. Um, you know, bringing, bringing speed humps to the Board of Aldermen for debate um and sidestepping the, the process um is not, is not the direction that we need to be going right now. We need a citywide plan or some sort of set of policies equally applied across the city, not a patchwork of policies developed by individual Aldermen. Um, you know, speed humps are, are one tool in the toolbox for, for traffic calming and for reducing speeds, but there may be other approaches and other methods that, that should be applied. And we're essentially sidestepping that whole process um and deciding that this patchwork of, of speed humps is, is the way we're going to solve these problems. So you know, therefore, I, I urge all of us to give the new Streets Director a chance um to be able to look at this problem, to apply her knowledge and expertise to this situation and and to vote no on this bill until we can have a proper, a, a proper plan in place. I'm just not ready to give up on, on city functions at, at this point. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alder Woman. Uh, Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I rise in support of this board bill and I hope that you have your mouth, Mr. President, because this is a very messy and dirty situation when the administration tries to backdoor the elected branch of government in the main sponsor of this legislation. And she has been courteous uh in, in, in overwhelmingly uh in support of trying to work with the administration. I have waited to get board, uh to get, to get speed homes in my ward since I've been Alderman. Paid for them in two thousand eighteen and speed ones have not been installed yet. Uh, so my ward is in dire need of this. And, and I do, I do agree. We need a strategic, citywide, comprehensive plan that addresses uh speeding, that addresses all of our tr- all of our traffic issues. But we cannot continue to wait. We cannot continue to say, let's, let's get a new director, let's get a new commissioner and, 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 you know, and let's finally put some uh pen to paper and, and draw out some imaginary plan. Uh, in our wars, people speed. My seniors, uh my families, uh my schools, they asked for speed bumps. And, and I actually, I want to thank the Alderman from the first ward because she helped me install speed bumps on more than eight of my residential streets uh 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 in my ward that I've been waiting on for the last two years. I finally got them just about eight months ago. And I, I'm going to thank the, uh, now I know she helped other Aldermen do it as well. But we cannot continue to wait. And this board bill allows us and gives us the tools that we need to do with our constituents and what our residents are asking of us. Because for the, to be quite frank, Mr. President, everybody goes to the Alderman for everything. I don't think that we should be responsible for choosing uh what streets get speed bumps and, and responsible for, you know, what streets get special attentions. Unfortunately, that's been put in our lap, like so many other things uh when it comes to the government bureaucracy here in the city of St. Louis. Uh, so we have to move with it. And our residents don't want to hear us continuously say, well, we're waiting on the Street Director. We gotta pay nine hundred dollars for a traffic study that, that's imaginary as well. Uh, they don't want to hear us say that we're continuously reaching out to the Streets Director, continuously reaching out to the administration to get something this simple done. So I rise in support of this board bill. I will urge my colleagues to, to support it as well. This is simple legislation. You know, this is not taking any power out of the uh Department of Streets or from the Director of Streets who's coming in. I look forward to working with her. Uh, I, I think she will do a fantastic job, but, but our job is not to be convenient for their leadership. Our job is to be convenient for our wards. Our job is to legislate for our wards. And that's exactly what this board bill does. And, Mr. President, if it's okay with the Alderman from the first, I would like to be added as a uh co-sponsor on this legislation. And, and also with the, with the Alderman from the first word, uh force word, uh ward, yield to question.
Alderman from the first will yield the question to the Alderman from the twenty-first.
Yes, Mr. President, I will.
Alderman from the twenty-first, please proceed.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and thank you, Alder Woman, Madam Chair. Uh, Alder Woman, when, before you became the, the Chairman for the Committee on Streets, um, you requested a, a list of all speed bumps that has been installed in the city of St. Louis in the past four years, I believe. This is under the Cruz administration. Did you ever receive that list from the administration?
I did. I have it available.
Absolutely. And can you tell me from, out of all the residential streets in the city, between north and south, and we can even throw in the central corridor, that's, that's really South City too, if you want to get technical. Uh, uh, a majority of speed bumps were installed in what part of the city?
South St. Louis and then followed by uh some uh central quarter and the very least in North St. Louis.
Absolutely. And when you requested Absolutely. And when you requested this information from the administration, what was the response that they gave you?
They stoned all me for many, many months and wouldn't give it to me. And so then I called Stephen Conway, whom you all have heard me say, we got elected within a few months of each other and said, I'm not going to say what I said to him because what I basically said is the charter allows every chair of a committee to get information just like the mayor and the comptroller. And gave him the citation and said, Stephen Conway, you don't want to get into this fight with me. He then had the Chair of, I mean, the Director of BPS send me the list. And the Director of BPS said, Stephen Conway made me send you the list. That is not how it's supposed to work. When we make requests, we're supposed to get it. But they did not want us to have it because they didn't want us to see what was going on because it was very clear. I have not shared that because I'm not trying to embarrass people. So I've not sent it to anybody. I've kept it to myself. But if anybody requests, then I will give it to you. And, and I do know that this is what happens when you're a director. You get appointed by the administration, so there is political pressure made on you. And so that's why I'm trying to take it out of the background. Everybody said, oh, well, we don't want to have to usurp the Street Director. We're not going to usurp the Street Director. We're not going to usurp BPS. They're still going to be part of the process. But then when we pass this, it'll be out in the open for everybody to know, to bait, to debate. If somebody introduces a board bill for ordinances that the Street Director of BPS doesn't agree with, they can come, the mayor's office can come. And again, we go through the process and always, because our charter gives the mayor this, this power, the mayor can veto it if it's something that's detrimental. But the Alderman from the 22nd and I, when we went to meet with BPS, it was agreed immediately that we didn't need those traffic studies. That was something that was, you, you really used to try to strong-arm us because they could, all of a sudden, so many people wanted it and they could get $900 a wop. And that is ridiculous to me. And they immediately backed off of that when we challenged that because they're still going to be doing engineering studies. They're going to be designing them with, with an engineer. So there's no, I'm not going to get out there and design not one speed hump.
Absolutely. And Alderman, I, I know all of us received the email from the Mayor's Director of Operations, Nancy Cross. I, I think that email came two days ago. I didn't really read it because I got the email two days ago. This board bill has been on the calendar for almost a year now. So I was not going to read something I just got. Can you, what was, what was the major concerns that the Director of Operations had? And again, I didn't read it and I'm asking publicly, just, just for transparency, but I'm not going to read something that, that was just rushed to get at a last minute. But can you, what, what were her major concerns, if you don't mind?
That there was a new black woman that was going to be the Director of Streets and therefore they wanted to meet with me and I wanted me to get to know her and then she could have a chance to put her, her, her input into whatever we were doing.
Absolutely. And of course, she, she, this new director that we have, which, which I, I believe will do a great job. I, I hope so. I'll be looking for it. This new director has never worked for the city of St. Louis Streets probably before, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Alderman, again, now Aldermen are not experts in everything, but we kind of have to become a jack-in-all-trays because everything gets thrown in our lap. How long have you served in the Board of Aldermen now?
I've only served 21 years. If I had not been gerrymandered, I would have been in my 31st year.
31st year. All right. 31 years, over 30 years. So Alderman, and I, I'm asking a facetious question here again, just for, just for public record, just for transparency. Don't you think you have the experience needed to know what streets need speed bumps and not, especially in your own ward?
I do. And to take that further, even if I don't, the people who live on the streets do. And I try to deliver services that the people who live on the streets want, okay? And sometimes things that I've wanted in the ward, people saw it differently and that petition went that way and that's what I did. Unless it, it would have to be something that was very detrimental and hurtful. But mostly I tried to give my residents the empowerment, that they have some control over what happens in their own community. Because a lot of times, because of racism, because of environmental racism, putting things in our community that we don't want liquor and all of that things, they don't have control of the things. But in this particular case, they do. And I wanted them to feel like that they were safe. And I, and, and, and again, I will share, I, I shared one of the pictures where in the 50 through the 5200 block of Northland, even while we were putting, cutting in the strips to put in the speed humps, people ran down the street, knocked the cars up into the middle of people's yards, damaged three or four cars. I've had several young people get hurt. I've had a young boy that got killed. So to me, this is immediate. This is the same immediacy that you have downtown with what's going on down there, but we've not gotten the same response. We've gotten, wait, 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 no. If you want me to wait, take all those extra police officers, which by the way, I don't know where you got them from. If you want me to wait, tell the people downtown to wait. I loved what the Chair, Chair of Public Safety said, not the Chair, but the Director of Public Safety, Dan Isom, said. He said, Dr. Dan Isom said, downtown is but one neighborhood in the city of St. Louis. So for me, Kingsway East, Kingsway West and other neighborhoods across the city are equally important. And so, yes, I do have that ability, but I also believe the people have the ability.
Absolutely. Thank you, Alderman. And thank you so much. And just one more question for you. On the streets that you have saw speed bumps on so far, I've voted against your ward and I've seen the speed bumps. And by the way, my constituents on the 4700 block of the streets that yours is adding for speed bumps. Now, because it will work. But on the streets that you haven't saw speed bumps on thus far, have you experienced the same speeding and car accidents on those streets?
Absolutely not. What I got is thank yous, emojis, we love you, re-elected. My opponent ran against the speed humps. People would say, oh, we're glad you're not the Alderman person. We're going to go in here and vote for Alderman Tyus because she did what we want. So all those things. And I, I live right across the street from the 50 through the 5200 block of Northland and have not had that at all. So that makes me proud that I could give something to my community because often I'm so frustrated. I used to could put a lot of things in my community because every year we built something new. I built the first new school, grocery store and Walgreens. And then I got gerrymandered. I'm finally getting my seniority back up. But I, I'm in office to deliver constituents this service. I actually go out and drive my ward. And when I drove my ward, I put in 100 service requests about things that were not done. That's what Nancy Cross needs to learn how to do, be the Director of Operations. So I'm not having to put in 100, 100 service requests. And you need to get me my Neighborhood Improvement Specialist that you promised me months ago. And don't take it from any other black Alderman and give to me because I, that ain't, that is not going to be acceptable for me.
Absolutely. And I can tell you, Alderman, on the streets that I have put speed bumps in, I've put roughly 27 streets in my ward have speed bumps now. And on those streets, my residents thank me and they love it. And they think that it has greatly deterred speeding. So they absolutely love it. So I, I, which I was saying. Thank you, Alderman. Mr. President, can the Alderman from the 22nd Ward yield for question?
Alderman from the 22nd will yield the question to Alderman, Alderman from the 21st.
Yes, sure.
Alderman from 21st, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, when you were Streets Director, I know you introduced similar legislation to cut out as of having a study done. Can you tell me, what was the response from the administration at that time?
Well, I wasn't Streets Director, but I was Chairman of Streets. I, it's been so long ago, I honestly can't remember. It, it just never happened.
Gotcha. If, if, if you, if you could entertain this for me, Alderman, would encourage you to look at how we do speed bumps in the process of that? Would encourage you to, to look into that and, and try to reconfigure and rework that process?
Well, because I was concerned that it had been over a year since I requested speed humps. And I just wanted to figure out what was going on and how we can do this better.
Absolutely. And Alderman, I know, man, you had this conversation before, again, in your capacity as Streets Chairman formerly. Did you ever receive a set price for speed bumps on your street? Or was the price always different, no matter if the street was pretty much the same?
Wow, that's a good question. Because I don't have a lot of speed humps in the 22nd Ward right now. I just remember nine hundred. I was just paid for a speed study. And I don't remember how much they cost. People wonder, am I just transferring the money?
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. And thank you to the Alderman from the First Ward. Mr. President, I will close with this. I fully support this board bill. Again, I want to be added as a co-sponsor and Madam Chairwoman for introducing this piece of legislation to give us the tool that we need to give our residents. And one of, one of the top requests that I get from my constituents in the 21st Ward in North St. Louis is can we get a speed bump on this street? And it should not take me two years or three years to get their speed bumps installed and equipped on these streets. I don't think that this will change with any director or whoever sits in their seat. I think that this process that we currently have is archaic. It doesn't make sense. And we can't use them when we want. I've had streets that has not got speed studies and got speed bumps on. Then I've had streets that I had to wait again, two years and three years to do a speeding study. And then when that speeding study is conducted and completed, I'm still waiting for speed bumps to be installed. It should not be like that. We do need a comprehensive study for, for, for our city streets, especially our residential streets. But how long is that going to take? Two years, three years, another four years to another administration? We don't have time for that. We need to pass this board bill and I will urge all of my colleagues to do so. I appreciate the Alderman from the First. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. As long as Alderman from the First doesn't object, please add Alderman from the 21st as a co-sponsor.
So noted.
Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the Alderman from the First yield for a question?
Alderman from First will yield a question to Alderman from 14th.
Yes, Mr. President, I will.
Alderman from 14th, please proceed.
Alderman, would you mind adding me as a co-sponsor to this bill?
Oh, no, I would, I, I, I would love to have you as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Alderman.
I appreciate all the work you did and, and considering people wanting to get some data behind this. I think that, you know, you've offered options for each Alderman to, to take care of the, the speed humps as they see fit. They don't want to install any. They don't have to. If they want to get a speed study, they can. So there are numerous options to get it, getting these done. I hope that the mayor sees all the work you've put into this and, and assessing what's going on and stays with it and, and doesn't veto this. I hope that we can find some common ground. I think, you know, after my experience of, of getting speed studies, getting traffic studies, spending thousands, $30,000, $50,000 on traffic studies and then ordering speed bumps where they were recommended and still waiting on them, shows that, you know, even with data, we don't, don't get what is recommended. Not, not what I want, but what is recommended by the engineers. So I think that, you know, having this process allows us to get these speed humps in as they're, they're recommended, as they're needed and hopefully in an expeditious manner. I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, whoever, that, that the new Director of Streets stays along with this process and, and will honor this board bill. And I'm sure that if they don't, we will, we will know why not. So thank you very much for all the work. I appreciate it. And you have my support with this. I will be voting yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman from the 14th. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Add Alderman from the 14th.
So noted.
All right. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Alderman Tyus, for coming up with this board bill. I would also like to have my name added to this, this bill. And I just want to say, I have had some of my streets with speed humps added to them. I have a lot of constituents still wanting speed bumps. But what happened at first, before your bill came along, there was a certain amount that we could only get. And then we had to get a, a speed evaluation for, for the rest. The ones that I didn't have to have an evaluation for was in front of my schools. So I had my schools done. And then I had four streets done because that was all I was allowed before the $900 speed study would have been implemented to all of the streets that I wanted to have speed humps on. Well, that didn't make sense to me. Why should I pay $900 per street for a study when that money could be going towards the speed humps going on my streets? Now, they say, well, you need to say, the people know whether or not they need speed humps. And I shouldn't say this. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to see if your street, if they're speeding up and down your street, that you need speed humps. So with that said, I'm for this, this bill. And I have more speed humps on the list to be done and I hope I get them. And minus the $900 fee for the study. So I just want to thank you. And as I said, make sure you add my name to this, this bill. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the 4th. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. The Alderman from the 4th also asked that her name be added to the bill.
So noted.
Alderman from 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to add a couple of things to this. First of all, please put my name as a sponsor of the bill. I'd also like to just kind of bring back a little bit of what makes sense. It makes sense to put this in place right now. And we know that if we don't, it may never happen. We also know that it does not preclude any other kinds of law studies or anything else you'd like to put in place. It doesn't preclude any new leader of that department to make any decisions, to have any kind of studies that they would like to have done. It does not preclude from the future, if we even had to amend this bill. But at this moment, it needs to be done so that the work can be moved, can be done on behalf of the citizens that have been waiting for years. I mean, years, we have put things in place and the work had not been done and are spending all of our small capital budget, $900 at a time for a speed hump, makes no common sense. And so I thank the Alderman person from the First Ward for the bill. I also want to say that when you have concern about something, irregardless to whether or not I may or may not return your call or communicate with you as fast as you would like me to, that does not preclude you from continuing to send me the appropriate information so that I can give you an answer in finality. That is a part of communication. That is a part of understanding how to keep the flow and process moving. I hope that we all learn more and work better together in the future. And that's all that we can hope for. But if it doesn't happen, we just have to do our business and move on. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. And, you know, this bill is being third read today. So we can't amend it by adding people on as co-sponsors. So my note to the clerk is So my note to the clerk, uh, is, uh, everyone that is requesting to be added as a co-sponsor, please, uh, add it in the notes of the journal. So just put it in the journal that, uh, these people requested also to be added as co-sponsors, but it would not change the underlying bill, but it is a note in the journal. And by the way, add my name to that also. Alderman from the fifteenth.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Finally back. Um. So first off, I want to start by saying that, you know, traffic issues, particularly speeding, is the number one complaint that I get from constituents. Um, you know, when we did participatory budgeting in the last cycle, um, we had two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two people who voted. And we had eight hundred and seventy-seven people who asked for more speed humps as one of their top, um, things that they wanted funded, uh, in the, the next, in that round of participatory budgeting. So after we did that, um, I then put out a survey to residents of the fifteenth ward, both at our neighborhood meetings and through email. Um, asking for feedback on places for placement. I got a request on nearly every single block in the entire ward. So I took that data and I went to then Streets Director, Deanna Venker, and I asked her, um, what we should do about this. You know, I don't have the budget to put a speed hump on every street. Every street probably doesn't need a speed hump. Um, and so what was the data-informed way that we could best make decisions about where these go? So we did, um, ended up doing a, a traffic study of the entire ward. Now, this is not my ideal way of doing these types of business. I think that traffic studies need to be done on a citywide basis and there needs to be, um, data and strategy behind our implementation of these traffic calming tools. Um, but I am lucky in that the fifteenth ward is, is fairly compact and pretty much a rectangle. And, um, and so they commissioned a traffic study. Um, the, the issue and what took a long time was that the city doesn't have the capacity to do these traffic studies in-house. And so when we were looking at doing something that was going to survey a lot of wards across, or a lot of blocks across the entire ward, um, to do a representative sample to figure out, um, traffic patterns and how we could install these in a way that wasn't just going to push speeding traffic over onto a neighboring street. Um, when we did that process, it had to be bid out for an RFP because the city does not have the internal capacity. So having to build it out, or having to bid that out, took about six months, um, to develop the RFP, to send it out, to get it back. Once we finally got that back, we got the traffic consultant in place to do the study. Um, they put out, you know, they started the study and then the next week is when we had the, the lockdowns due to COVID. And so they had to pull back because obviously our traffic numbers were down significantly. They would not have gotten good data. And so we had to go on pause for, um, several months until I think the end of August when, um, the traffic consultant in the Streets Department thought that our capacity was up to about the same capacity that it was, uh, pre-COVID. So then we did that study and they, um, they came, the traffic consultant, I think, ended up recommending something like twenty-three or twenty-eight speed humps, um, for the entire ward. But at that point in time, um, the previous Streets Director that we had worked with on divi- designing the scope of this, um, was no longer here anymore. And I could not get a response from the new Streets Director to be able to sign off on, um, these speed humps. It took months and months and months to be able to, um, I think six months total of contacting him before, and a new administration before I finally got a response back on those speed humps. Finally, those speed humps are approved. The traffic study is approved. Um, but we can't just install them because now, um, since we have so many of them to do, the city also doesn't have the capacity to do that. So what do we do? We outsource it again. So it has to go through another RFP process where it is bid out for a consultant to, um, come back to the city or a contractor to come back to the city and tell us how much that they are going to, um, charge to put in those speed humps. The concerns that I've heard from a lot of folks today seem to be about, well, you have these speed humps approved, much like I have, um, but you can't get them installed. I don't think that is a problem with the current, uh, by the fact that we don't have the authority to just put them in. We are going to run into the same issue of having to, to bid this out, go to, uh, get a contract to come back, um, and it to slow down the process. The solution to that is to bring these services in-house, to have somebody in the city that is able to do comprehensive traffic planning. So we don't have to bid it out to a third party every time we want to do this. Um, the solution is to have the city capacity to be able to install speed humps. So we don't have to go through an RFP process and bid this out every single time, uh, you know, we, we have, um, a large number of speed humps that we're trying to install. That is what's slowing down our process right now. And so by bringing these things in-house, by not outsourcing them, we can probably speed up this process. Um, the other thing I'll say is, you know, St. Louis right now has, um, in any given year, we're rated, I think, the fifth to the seventh most, uh, dangerous city when it comes to pedestrian fatalities. And, you know, while we might see some short-term benefits from being able to, um, you know, have the authority to put these speed humps in our, uh, in ourselves, at the end of the day, we are still creating a patchwork issue that's, um, diverting speed, speeding to different areas without a comprehensive strategy. And I think that it is that lack of strategy around all of these decisions that is responsible for our high pedestrian fatality rates. It's responsible for the reason we have, um, such, such bad issues with speeding right now. Because you can drive down one street and it could, you know, change older people three different times and you end up having three different, you know, modes of traffic calming along one strip of road depending upon what is supported by that older person. Um, it's not an efficient way to do business. It's not a, a way to promote, uh, pedestrian safety um, within, uh, any of these things. I think that this approach is also limiting our future ability to take more comprehensive measures. Um, and to develop citywide policies around the implementation of these speed humps. Um, you know, I know when we first, uh, when this bill first, uh, went through the Board of Aldermen, um, to allow us to do speed humps in the city, it was sponsored by Alderman Chris Carter. I worked with him on it. Uh, he worked, oh, for a very long time, um, with the Streets Director at that time to figure out a citywide policy for it. So if those citywide policies aren't working, let's figure out different citywide policies. If we don't think that the threshold, um, is low enough for, um, to trigger a block needing to have a speed hump, you know, let's figure out what the, the right threshold is. I think we can do these, uh, make these decisions on a comprehensive basis to make sure that we do have safe streets. Um, I know that's what everybody here wants, uh, and we can make sure that we're not doing hodgepodge decision-making that can change from, you know, block to board, depending on the approaches. Um, and the last thing I'll say is, you know, I, I do think, knowing that it is, uh, a strategy of the new administration and I, I presume of the new Streets Director to take a more comprehensive look. Um, you know, I, I do think it's appropriate to give her some time to come to us with a, a plan for what this looks like. You know, speed hu- speed studies that I've done have took it, have taken, you know, six, eight months to complete. Um, they're not going to be done in, in two months. And, uh, and I, you know, I would like to see what the new director, who, who seems to have a vision for this, wants to, wants to do before we go taking away authority from, um, from that person's ability to, to, you know, do her job on a comprehensive manner. Um, so I do want to thank the Alderwomen from the first for, you know, coming forth with this bill. Obviously, we all are struggling with this issue across the entirety of the city. I think we just disagree on the, the solution to get us to a place where we have safer streets. Thanks.
All right, Alderman from the twenty first.
Thank you, uh, Mr., Mr. President. Will the Alderman from the, uh, fifteenth ward yield a question?
Alderman from the fifteenth will yield a question to the Alderma- Alderman from the twenty first.
Sure.
Alderman from twenty first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. You, Alderwoman Green. I, I recall that board bill. That's, that was board bill eighty-eight that was passed in the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen session. Uh, and I actually spoke to Alderman Carter, former Alderman Chris Carter, about that board bill. And one thing that he said was, he regrets passing it because he sees the dysfunction in the legislation that he introduced. Uh, and it represents North St. Louis. He understood that he basically passed legislation that slows down a process. Uh, that creates an archaic process that is not conducive to the needs that, that we have here in North City. And that, that leads me to this question that I have for you, uh, respectfully. How many residents call you on a regular basis about their cars being hit on residential streets?
I mean, it's a lot. And I think that's the reason that, you know, almost half of about a third, a little bit more than a third of people who voted in participatory budgeting asked for more speed humps.
Thank you, Alderwoman. And, and can, can you be a little more detailed with that? Because I can tell you, almost every call I get is about speed bumps. Um, a resident will call me about trash, then the last thing we talk about is speed bumps. Because this is the permanent issue that we have, uh, in North, in, in North City. Um, do you experience, uh, police chases in your ward? Do you experience cars just flying through stop signs and school zones? Um, uh, have your residents had their homes and our cars hit, you know, several times in, in a month? Because that happens to me all the time on Lee Avenue. I know the Alderman from the first, that happens to her a lot on Lee Avenue. Um, like, does this happen on a regular basis? I mean, when you get calls, I'm sure you get requests, but do you experience this on an average basis?
Yes, um, especially on South Grand. Uh, you know, the business director, Business District Director would attest to the number of times that we've had businesses on South Grand that are hit by cars. Um, that we've had the, uh, the, uh, bump outs taken out by cars, that we've had lights taken down. Uh, we've had several intersections here that, um, that are, are quite dangerous. But speed humps are put mid-block. They're not put in the middle of an intersection to, to solve those issues. So part of the reason we did the comprehensive traffic study was to also look at ways that we could redesign those intersections to make them more safe.
Absolutely. So I, I, I know you mentioned North Grand, I mean, South Grand. Uh, of course, we all have streets where we cannot put speed bumps on, South Grand, North Grand, Kings Highway, West Florissant, Natural Bridge. Um, again, I, I wish speed humps could go on Natural Bridge, even with the reconstruction that we did last year. Um, but are there any residential streets that you have this problem on? I know you mentioned South Grand. That's a major thoroughfare. They experience traffic all day, twenty-four, seven, but do you have residential streets in your ward filled with seniors, not business owners, filled with seniors, filled with children, uh, filled with families who feared that their kids playing outside because of a speeding car? Uh, because that's what we have in North St. Louis. Do you have streets like that in the fifteenth ward? Not so. Not Morgan Ford, not, not, no.
Absolutely. And again, that's the reason that eight hundred and seventy-seven people out of two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two people in the fifteenth ward voted for speed humps. Um, it's because they want a safe place for their kids to be able to play without being, feeling like they're going to get hit by a car. Um, they want the, you know, their houses to not be hit by cars or their, their cars to not be hit by cars. Um, it is a top priority, um, as I, I think I've reiterated several times.
I mean, yeah, you said it several times. It's just really not making sense because my, my question's not really getting the. Have residential streets, have you had people have their cars hit more than once? Have their homes been hit more than once on residential streets? Has this happened in your ward?
Yes.
Have speed bumps on streets, your ward right now on those streets? What streets are there, if you don't mind? I would love to take a drive down.
Oak Hill is the biggest one where this is happening. We have residents there who have had their cars hit and.
Can you give me two seconds? I just want to write this down, Alderwoman. Go ahead. I'm ready now. What streets?
Sure. Oak Hill is the number one street where we're having that, uh, that experience right now. We've had multiple homeowners who have had their cars hit three or four times. I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Is that a one-way?
No, that is a two-way street.
Is that a, that a, okay. And any other streets?
Uh, Gustine, Gustine would be the other one.
Okay.
And I've been waiting, yeah, I've been waiting on speed humps for both of those streets for quite some time. They were both identified in the traffic study as needing speed humps for those reasons.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. And, and, and I'm glad you said what you just said. You've been waiting for speed bumps for quite some time. Uh, and again, so have, you know, so, so have every other Alderman north and south. But again, I want to be transparent and the Alderwoman from the first ward has said this several times as well. Um, do you know that it is a hundred percent chance that speed bumps is going to put down, are going to be put down in your ward before they're put down in mine's or any other North City ward, regardless of the timeframe, uh, uh, that we put them in. So I could put down speed bumps, uh, uh, right now, and I guarantee you, under this process that we have currently, they will not be installed until twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Uh, but it's, it's a good chance that yours will be installed, as you said. Within a year, you had speeding studies done with six to eight months. That's pretty good. I wish I had that. My speeding studies take, uh, almost two years. I, I mean, I've got, I got streets, I got streets right now that's waiting on a speeding study that I did two years ago. That still has not.
Correct that, that statement. With six to eight months to get the traffic study parameters approved, and then it was another six months to actually conduct the traffic study. Um, and probably another month after that to come back with the data um, in the, the initial rough draft of the traffic study. And that was for an entire ward, not just for, you know, a select couple of blocks.
Sure. So altogether, it takes you about fourteen to fifteen months to get a speed bumps done, basically.
Correct. But I think that is a product of the RFP process and it taking, you know, six to eight months to go through the RFP process. If we could provide that service in-house in the city, it would be much faster than having to go to a bid process for it.
Okay, you fell into, in a little bit. So as I just said, it would take roughly about fifteen to sixteen months for you to get speed bumps installed in your ward. Why it takes a North City Alderman three to four years, something that me and Alderman Bosley, something that me and Alderwoman Tyus, something me and Alderman Boyd, Alderwoman Pam Boyd. We've all discussed, uh, several times. It takes us about three to four years and it takes you sixteen months. Now are you understanding the need for why this legislation is on a table of other types? You probably don't. That's okay. But.
This legislation does not fix. This legislation does not fix that issue. Even if you are to sign off on speed humps that you want, it is still going to have to go out to a bid process because the city does not have the capacity to install them on their own. So you're still looking at, you know, six to eight months to go through the RFP process to find a contractor who can install the speed humps. And then after that, um, waiting until that contractor has the time and their workload to go and install those speed humps. So it doesn't fix the issue.
It, it does for us. It's Alderman Tyus that Madam Chair has said. Again, you, so this cuts out the, the need for a speeding study. This to even pay and you, we all know going to NA, going through tougher improvement. Yes, that's a whole nother process. That's going to take, that's going to take eight months by itself. So this actually does cut the process for us. So this actually does cut the process for us in the wars that actually, that actually count on these speed bumps to stop derelict speeding. Because now we're not going through these various steps, these numerous redundant steps that really don't matter. So it does cut it out. So now, instead of it taking two years for us, so it will take us two years, it'll take you fifteen months. Maybe now with this legislation, we can get to fifteen months, just like you have over there in South Grand. That's all I have. Thank you for answering my questions, Alderman Green. I yield, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, further discussion? Alderman from the eleventh.
Ms. President, I'd like to speak on the bill, please.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that I, in my ward, and one of the top complaints, if not number one complaint, is speeding. South Broadway, South Grand, Michigan, Minnesota, Pennsylvania. I mean, it's pervasive, it's horrible, it's not even just the speeding, it's the running into cars, it's, like I mentioned earlier today, running stop signs, South Broadway, they use the turn lane as a passing lane, I mean, it's, it's scary. And so I don't think this is limited to one spot in the city, I think this is probably everywhere. I just want to point out that we, in the last, just this session, I've heard some really disturbing stuff, just, you know, from colleagues, like that speed humps are only put in certain wards. I mean, I think that's a huge problem, if that's the case, maybe streets needs to have a hearing where we pull up the data, timeline of request, where it's getting done, where it's not getting done. I mean, I've had issues with alley vacations where I can't seem to get an alley vacation. Businesses can't sell their real estate or purchase real estate because of some of those things. Building Division only doing things in certain wards for votes. I mean, these are problems, and maybe the, maybe the committees that are relative to these issues need to have some real investigative hearings because I, we can keep talking about them, but if these problems exist, then let's pull up the data and let's see. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Right, Alderman from the first, you're recognized to close.
Mr. President, members of the board. I do renew my motion that board bill forty, the third read, and finally passed. I will say just a few little things here, I took some notes that I just don't understand why they keep coming back up again. Speed humps and other traffic calming are not permanent. You can undo almost anything. So if a speed study comes out and says that we need to do some things differently, then we have to all come together and look at it. Should we open some of those private streets in the central quarter? Should we open some of those closed streets? Should we open some in the first ward? Because I have a lot of closed streets that closed at one end. These are things that can be addressed holistically. When I put my bill on the informal calendar, if you were serious about you were going to do a speed study, that was the time for you to start one. You could have started a speed study with the current director, you did not have to wait for the new one for data. Data does not care who the director is. Data is data, but nothing was done. That was very disappointing to me because not only have I been a supporter of the mayor, but I've been the go-to person for Ms. Cross when she wanted things done at this board. So then when you just don't do anything and you're like putting me off, I don't have the luxury of waiting. I mean, literally, I was getting pictures every day or so of people who were having their property destroyed. And also people who got a bodily injury. And so these people can pick up and leave, which many of them have been doing over the years. So I don't have that luxury. I do have the luxury of passing this board bill, and then if we want to do something different, bring it on, let's do something holistically, and let's look at, let's take some hard looks. I was kind of interested in the Alderman from the twenty-eighth talking about this whole, how we do the process. One of the things that I've been getting the most complaints about, as the chair of streets, are those little alligator speed humps that she has over there on Union. A lot of people didn't like them, and they've reached out to me and said they didn't like them, and why did she get to do that? Now, that wasn't, that didn't go through a process, but they got done. Sometimes when people have privilege, they sit and throw rocks at things because they're the privileged people. And so you got your streets are closed, you don't need speed humps, you're putting these little cutesy alligator things down. And so then you say, but you shouldn't have that. Yes, we should have that, we should have them. And I'm going to come back with a timeframe about how fast they have to do these things. I agree with Alderman from the fifteenth. We shouldn't have to, to have these things be done by a contractor. But right now, we do, that costs a lot more money. But for my constituents, they are willing for the money to be spent because it costs them a lot more money when their automobiles are being knocked into the front of their front yards, and when their children are getting injured, and when their sons and daughters are dying. So I can't fix everything, but the things that I can, I want to at least have attempted to do. I don't want to look into people's faces and say that I did nothing. I'm not willing to wait two more weeks until the new director starts and then get situated because I have already waited a couple of months. So to me, I've always been taught to own my own stuff. It is your fault, Nancy Cross, that you didn't get a speed study done, or the mayor's is one of your two faults. It is your fault that you didn't get with me and invite me to sit down with this lady before now into the last couple of days. Those are all your responsibilities. It's your fault that I don't have a neighborhood improvement specialist, so I'm out there doing that work. Own your own stuff. And what I'm going to own is that I am a legislator. And as a legislator, I can introduce board bills, and I'm going to continue to introduce them. And I'm going to talk to my colleagues, I'll talk to the mayor's office, we can work on making things better. But I'm not going to sit around and wait, 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 especially when I see that whenever something happens downtown, it becomes an immediate response, we got to do something. Because of course, the rich people can have a fit about the encampments across the street from their building, and then sooner or later, something gets done. That wasn't what you all talked about originally, you progressives. You, you were against that, but that got done, that got moved from in front of their spot. So for me, what I can do over in the first ward is make sure that I can put as many speed humps in as possible. Now, we've already got a note from the director saying, if we had got our things in in time, that we will be getting some more speed humps this fall. One, I got mine put in, they put them in really fast, I mean, at a rapid speed, and the people were very pleased with them. So I'm looking forward for Pinrolls, Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Mark Twain, and all the other neighborhoods across the city that need speed humps, that this board bill will allow them to do so. And thank you for the Alderman talking about participatory budget, because we do participatory speed humps. And those petitions are great when we do those participatory speed humps because they turn them in and say they want them, and we're serving the community and we're serving our constituents. And with that, Mr. President, members of the board, thank you for the people who added your name or who already had your name. And I moved to third read and finally passed board bill forty. And I want to roll call for those who want to vote no.
Been moved by Alderman from the first, second by Alderman from the twenty-third, and tenth that we third read and finally passed board bill number forty, Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Alderman Tyus?
Yes, aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderman Iglesias?
No.
Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
No.
Alderman Gunther? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Ballmer?
Aye, 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 aye.
Alderman Martin? Alderman Martin? Alderman Stevens?
Abstain.
Alderman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Green?
No.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Peel? Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer? Alderman Collins Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Baccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cole?
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro?
No.
President Reed? Alderman Martin?
No.
Alderman Peel? Alderman Spencer?
No, I, I'm sorry, you didn't catch me last time.
Oh, got it, thank you. Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, twenty aye votes, six no votes, one abstain, and one voted pro.
One aye, Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on a second. And she's already called the vote, so if you hold for a second, by your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman, all one from, from the first and third read and finally pass board bill number forty. Alderman from the twenty-second. Uh, we, we can't hear you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
I'm not, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, the Alderman from the twelfth abstained, and I'm not sure if that was a proper vote, unless he had a conflict of interest.
He can still, he can still abstain for whatever reason. Yeah, so, so that was, it, it's, it's odd because, you know, extension would be, you know, some conflict of interest or whatever, but he, he can, he can decide if he wants to reveal what that conflict was at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Board bills for final passage and grossment.
Board bill forty.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session fix this signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. One from the nineteenth, I don't know if you still with us, but Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion. Congratulations, Alderman from the first, by the way, congratulations.
On the nineteen, I can't hear you, sir.
Yeah, Alderman from nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions count.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar, please.
Second. Move by Alderman from the nineteenth, second by Alderman from twenty-second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll dispense with line items twenty and twenty-one. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, legislation will have a meeting at eleven a.m. via webinar. Public safety will have a meeting one p.m. via webinar. Wednesday, September twenty-ninth, the streets will have a meet at eleven a.m. via webinar. Friday, October first, twenty twenty-one, full board meeting ten a.m. via webinar. That is the extent of the announcements.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just happened to see earlier that it is Chief Jankerson of the St. Louis Fire Department's birthday today, and just wanted to wish him a happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday, Chief. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Last week, we missed our colleague Alderman James Page's birthday, so I have belated birthday greetings to Alderman Page. Happy birthday, I hope you had a great week. And also would love to invite you all out to the Tower Grove Pride Festival is this weekend, is Saturday from eleven a.m. to probably about six p.m. or maybe a little bit later if you hang around in the park. But in the heart of Tower Grove Park, it is, it's been, you know, two years since we've been able to gather together. They've got a great lineup for kids and families and everybody in between, some roller skating. If you've got roller skates, bring those out. But it's a great community pride event and would love to see you all there.
All right. And happy birthday, Alderman Page. Well, thank you. It, it was quite an honor to, to have achieved my age, which I won't say. All.
Twenty-nine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alderman, Alderman from the twelfth.
Oh, my dearest colleagues. Today, we received notice, or today was announced, that the Requiem of Light Memorial for St. Louisans lost to COVID will be occurring, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, October second, at seven p.m. on Art Hill, down by the basin. It's going to be an event that features music by a wide diverse, diversity of acclaimed artists, rather, local artists with testimonials from members of the community and words of condolence and healing by interfaith leaders. And it's a memorial for the nearly three thousand St. Louisans who have been lost to COVID over the past, boy, nearly two years now. So that again is the Requiem of Light Memorial for St. Louisans lost to COVID at the Grand Basin, at the base of Art Hill, October second, twenty twenty-one, seven p.m., thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the tenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Just a note on this day, nineteen sixty-eight, Sixty Minutes premiered, and the Alderman from the twenty-third said it was the best two hours of TV he ever watched.
Must have had it on his TiVo or something. All right. Any further, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to announce that this Saturday, I do believe it's sold out, but sometimes we can find a few seats. The Salute to Women's in Leadership Gala that is being sponsored by the Urban League Guild and the Urban League Regional Office is a very proud gathering in supporting and honoring women who are volunteering in our communities in prestigious positions. And we are very happy to have this again. Sixteen women will be honored, and we're looking forward to that this Saturday. And I wanted to thank them for doing this, and this I do believe is the twenty, no, it's the eighteenth year. So I wanted to say thank you, and I also want to say thank you to all of my residents who participated in the health fair last weekend. It was quite a success, and thus what communities are for. The more we allow our residents to organize, perpetuate their communities and how they want to see them run, the better off we will all be. And, and so I just wanted to say thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fifth. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to invite the board of Alderman, their friends and families, to an event that we're calling the Future of the Fifth, Future of the Fifth Ward Community Event. It will take place at the Murphy Park Playground, and it will start at one p.m. on Saturday, concluding at four p.m. There will be lots of games and funs for, fun for the kids, a bounce house, basketball games, and lots of things for youth to do, including events for STEAM and STEM interesting, interested students, so opportunity to learn how to play chess. Come on out and join us, you will find a flyer in your inbox that I will send you, you will also find information on my Facebook page, James Page for War.
a flyer in your inbox that I will send you. You will also find information on my Facebook page, James Page Four Ward Five. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, uh, Alderman Davis kind of reminded me to thank my residents of the twenty-seventh ward. We had a community listening session for our Goodfellow, our Goodfellow project. And that committee is ran by residents and Channel Four and Five covered their story to show the participation of residents within the twenty-seventh ward. They kind of chose how they saw the Goodfellow Commune Project to look and they voted on the guidelines of what they wanted to see. So I wanted to thank all the residents in the twenty-seventh that participated, that filled out the survey, and I look forward to a great new year coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Also want to just, um, you know, congratulate all of the um, uh, awardees uh, this year and for the Women's Salute to, salute, salute ward uh, ceremony. I'm looking up the list here. Don't know if Alderman Davis has that list of some of the awardees, but um, but they, they've done some great things in our community, but also across the country. So I want to just uh, really send out a special congratulations to them. I do not have the total list in front of me, but I know like Dr. Eva Fraser, who is the mother to uh, Steve Roberts Junior, uh, state senator, and some others that have done great things and uh, really helped throughout our community in a great way. So let's give them a big round of applause and congratulations. And I'll ask the, ask that the clerk publish that full list of awardees on our website. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth, you were recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I believe at one time or another today, we are all present. Thank you, sir.
All right, excellent. Alderman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to October first, twenty twenty-one at ten oh one AM.
Been moved by Alderman from the tenth. I maintain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the fourteenth, then the host of others. I didn't get everybody else, but I think it may have been Alderman from the fourth and the fourteenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Opposed.
We're out of here.